Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We are here today on November 6th, 2021 for our annual Budget Saturday Workshop. I'll dispense with the formality since this is not a formal town council meeting. It is a budget workshop. So we're going to start off with some level setting on the budget. So I've got an opening statement here before we turn this over to the town manager. As I went back and looked at all of the work that's been done over the last 10 years, I asked the staff for some information, also some things I want us to focus on going forward. So from budget guidance standpoint, we've had 10 years since we've been doing the default budget and we've been at or below default budget for 10 years. It will more than likely be the recommendation of the council to continue to hold the line on spending as we go into these inflationary times versus the COVID times of last year. One thing I'd like you to think about while you're walking through this over the next several weeks is, is consider the influx in the energy costs. Do we need a warrant article to address this going forward? What kind of strain on the infrastructure could affect the community? So whatever it is we're budgeting for gas, energy right now, which looks like it's going to, which has doubled and tripled, let's take a look at where we're at today and make sure that we're going to have enough to continue to be able to plow the roads and respond to emergency services calls. 23% of the taxes are applied to town services for 186 miles of roads, triple the amount of calls of service since 2010 for police and fire. Another item we need to focus on is Londonderry has aged as a community with approximately 1,000 homes designated for 55 plus. This has required many more service calls from our emergency services people to assist those communities. We are facing multiple issues, roadblocks around drinking water and Saint Cobain-like contamination, and it's not only limited to Saint Cobain, but as we go through this budget process, let's make sure we continue to understand how we protect our residences through safe drinking water. The COVID pandemic has seen an expectation of more local entertainment and community events. What we've seen from this is people are looking for the community for things to do. So as we're walking through our budget process, let's think about those things that have been successful and whether we need to push funding in that area to continue to make them more successful, such as concerts on the common, old home days, et cetera. The thing I ask here is, is as we go through the budget process from the budget committee, the town council, and from the staff, if you, you know, we really don't have anyplace else to go if we're going to lower the budget, and I'm not saying that that's the goal of what we're looking to do is, is looking to hold the line. But if you're looking to cut, bring solutions, just not issues. Understand what those are going to be if you're going to, because we only have very little wiggle room. Everything we do is driven by people. So over 80% of our budget is driven by people. So remember, if you bring it up, have a solution. The continuation of the creating a bottom line budget presentation to the voters, let's talk about that. It's worked successfully so far where we can, our CEO, who's our town manager, can move money around in order to meet the expectations of what happens in the town and those unexpected Revenue shortfall from the, from abatement and the amount the UFP will be applied to the tax rate. Let's talk about what we talked about at the town council meeting. Let's talk about what happened with the power plant and the abatement process and what that means and what that means to the reduction in revenue that we had to replace. And what are our plans going forward? I asked the staff to put together some information around grants over the last 10 years. Over the last 10 years, we've focused heavily on grants and continuing to push for the money that is out there that we can go and we can obtain. Thus far, over the last 10 years, we've obtained $6,914,000 in grants. Not bad. The money's there regardless of, you know, it's being allocated, but you gotta, you know, it's kind of like the lottery. You gotta be in it to win it. You gotta play. How much money have we used since 2010 from the undesignated fund balance? It's been used in various ways. It's been used directly to lower the tax rate. It's been used on the ballot for infrastructure. It's been used for projects in town. Over the last 10 years, we've used $15,450,832. So almost 15.5 million, money that got projects done or returned directly to the taxpayers to hold the line and to hold the tax rate. So with all those things in mind, what we'd like to hear from the staff today is, is how are we going to continue to meet these goals? While they may seem impossible at times, this is where we need to focus. We don't have the ability like other forms of government that exist in the state to just continue to raise taxes. Our motto has been, we do the best we can with as little as we have while services continue to put a strain and demand on what we do. So that's the overall theme. So with that, Mr. Town Manager, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to present to you this morning an overview of our fiscal year 2023 budget. This is probably as straightforward a budget as I've presented in the last 10 years. If you saw or hear for last year's budget presentation, this may sound a little bit like a broken record, but there's, there's not a whole lot new here. So I, I have the presentation on the, it's on the screen behind you. Do you all have it on your computers too? We do. Excellent. Okay. So slide two there, just some background information on the process, deliberative sessions on February 5th. That's where the voters can go and finalize any budgetary items. And the voters will ultimately have a choice between the council, what ends up becoming the council's budget and a default budget. And as you pointed out, John, the, we've never had a budget that's been over default. It's either been at default or below it. Slide three, the default budget again, as amended by the town charter in 2021 is last year's amended operating budget, either reduced or increased by debt service, contractual items, salary and other employee related costs, other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by any one-time expenses in the fiscal year 22 operating budget. Slide four, you'll see the approved budget for last year was a little over $36 million. The default budget for this year is just a little bit above that, 36,476,969. And my proposed budget is about 90,000 or actually almost about 100,000 below that, I would note that the increase, so the increase in the default budget over last year's is less than 1%. It's 0.87%. My budget is even lower than that. It's point six, it's actually 0.59, Justin apparently rounded up, but it comes out to 0.60 over last year's budget. I would point out that inflation CPI is running at 5.9%. Last year's budget was 1.48% over the previous year. So between what's being proposed this year and what last year's budget was, it's still less than half of what inflation is running at right now. So Mr. Chair, when you talk about holding the line on spending, I think we've, we've done well in this area over, over the last, not just couple of years, but over a number of years. What's driving the, the small increase in the budget? We had a few reductions this year. One is a reduction in debt service. These are mostly roadway bonds, and then we also had a consolidation now to in-house legal services, which saved money in that line as well. With regard to the roadway bonds, one thing I do want to bring up is that Councilor Frida, years ago, when he was on the council, had come up with an idea that as roadway bonds started dropping off the debt service, we would take that money and then put that into the roadway maintenance line in the operating budget so that there was basically a level, level funding there. You weren't increasing taxes, you weren't reducing taxes or spending, I should say. It's, it was a good idea. We can't do it under the default budgeting law because you really, you can't take a debt service number that's coming off and use that money and apply it somewhere else. So while I think it was a well-intentioned idea by Councilor Frida, we're just not able to do that. And then lastly, so on this line, the last bullet there is, I am proposing to take about $95,000 of that delta between the default and the proposed and to put more money towards salt. Again, as, as the chairman noted in his opening remarks, things are going up now. Utility costs are going up, salt has gone up. And then a little later in the police presentation, you'll hear about them needing more funding for hardware and software for anti-hacking. All you have to do is Google what's been going on in the country over the last few years where municipalities are getting, just they're all getting cyber hit. And so it's becoming a real issue. They, you'll see they're asking for more money. What I've done here is I've tried to keep it within the default. Otherwise, if, if they're going to need, if you wanted to give them a proposal of more money, you would either have to go over default to do a separate warrant article. So, but I've kept it all within in default. So that's why I've put the funding where it is in, in this presentation. Line five, excuse me, slide five, these are capital reserve maintenance trust funds. Nothing new from last year here. This would appropriate $75,000 into the Pillsbury Cemetery Fund, which continues to be expanded. The cable equipment, that's all funded with outside revenue, so that's not through taxation. And then fire equipment, Chief O'Brien will talk more about this in his presentation, but it would continue to fund that at 100,000 with 50K coming from the undesignated fund balance. Expendable maintenance trust, same thing as last year, 180K total with 90K coming from fund balance, and then roadway maintenance at $650,000. Special warrant articles. As far as monetary items, again, the additional appropriation for IT hardware and software, this is something that, you know, we can decide not to do. We can do it. As I mentioned a couple of slides ago, I have appropriated $55,000 towards it under the default budget. The union contract, we're still in negotiations with IAFF. That's largely the, well, that is the fire department. The recreation revolving fund to accept donations. This actually is not a, this should not have been under monetary item. This is just creating a revolving fund so that we can accept donations into the rec department. And then the same thing with non-monetary dissolving the, the eco park. I don't know if how many of you recall, we created an eco park up by the airport. How many years ago, Justin? 20?
30.
It's, it's been lying dormant for a while. It still has some money in it. So this would not be appropriating money, but this would be dissolving it and moving the money to fund the, the master plan. And then non-monetary items, there may be an approval of a lease with the school district for moving the school district office next to town hall. And then there may be a potential conservation land swap, which I put this on your radar for now, the details of which may or may not come later in the budget process. But again, I just, I put it on there for your radar. So really, the, the only potential monetary items on this list are the fire contract and potentially more money for IT. Slide seven, fund balance. Again, proposing to use 140,000 for fire department equipment in the expendable maintenance trust fund. The amount we used in fiscal year 22 was a little over 1.4 million, which included using it to offset the tax rate. You'll see that our fund balance ending June 30 of this year was a little over 4.5 million. By our own policy, the minimal reserves have to be 1.8, which would leave 2.7 available for use, though as I had talked about at the council meeting earlier this week, I would highly suggest we do not go that low in our fund balance for a number of reasons, but those are the numbers as they stand today. Just a couple of other items that get tacked on to the overall budget when we're putting all the appropriations together in the tax rate is we do have an overlay account that is to fund any abatements that may come in. So that's funded at 171,000. That's the same as last year. And then we do have veterans exemptions in town, and I believe we're at the top end of all of the phases now, if I'm correct, Justin. I don't believe we have any more.
I believe that's accurate.
Yeah. So we're funding that at a little over $640,000. These are some revenues, estimated revenues for the operating budget. All of these, you know, most of these are going up. There's an upward trend with our revenues, which is certainly a good thing. But again, this is, there aren't any surprises from what you would have seen last year. And then the next graph just shows the level of revenue year over year. It's somewhat misleading and certainly if you want to get into more of the details, we can do that, but sometimes you get one-time revenues that come in, and so that's what skews it going up and down. Our reoccurring revenues, as far as our reoccurring revenues go, and I'm talking about motor vehicle, rooms and meals, highway block ramp, most of them have been on the upward trend, but we do get one-time revenues and that, that is what skews the numbers sometimes from year to year. Slide 11, this is just looking at our value, total valuation in town. We are now an over $5 billion enterprise after the latest revaluation. And note that this is actually, this includes the loss of $135 million from Granite Ridge. So despite losing $135 million, we still went from almost 4.7 billion to just over $5.1 billion. The estimated tax rate on slide 12, again, we have an estimated rate here of 447. We budget this very conservatively. It's never come in over in all the years I've been doing this. It's always come in under. And so this is just to give you an idea of pretty much worst case scenario, what we could be looking at for the town's, townside tax rate. But again, this is done very conservatively. Slide 13, this is just a historical look at our town tax rate per thousand. As I said on Monday, we're at a historic low now. I couldn't find anywhere in our records where the town's tax rate has been below $4.16 as it is today. And so that's what this graph shows. And I would note that from eight years ago, we're more than a dollar less. On Monday, I had said we were going to be at 420, and between Monday and today, we got some good news from the state that we were getting more money in rooms and meals, which again, the more revenue you get, it offsets the, the tax rate. And so that's why it's down to $4.16 now. How the tax rate is set, voters approve a budget and the warrant articles in March. The valuation is completed in October. It's based on April 1 values. State revenues are announced in October and other revenues revised. DRA then sets the rate in October, November, and then the tax bills are sent out. Just another point I would touch upon, which again, Mr. Chair, you brought up in your opening remarks is that, you know, as we look toward keeping services where they're at, keeping the level services of where they're at and what people expect, but also not wanting to, or holding spending in check, not wanting to raise taxes, what are other areas we can look at? Either reducing expenses through being, having new creative ideas or bringing in revenues, which is why Counselor Paul, I would credit you for giving the presentation or bringing in the folks to the presentation on the Net Zero Initiative, because that is something where you can find ways to reduce expenses and also potentially bring in new revenues without having to cut town services. And so the more we can find different programs like that, that definitely helps. And then just looking at a comparison of tax rates. Again, these don't always tell the whole story because of valuation numbers, but if you look here, so this is looking at the town tax rate comparisons. The only ones that have been set as of today for this year are Bedford and Londonderry. Bedford's a very high valuation town as well, which is why we're on the lower end. But you look at the other surrounding communities, we're comparing Dairy, Merrimack, Salem, they're all significantly higher on their townside rate than where we are in Londonderry. And the same thing, even when you look at the total rate, this is adding in the schools, local and state, as well as county. Both our tax, total tax rate as well as Bedford's are more than a few dollars lower than where the other communities are. Just a few things I want to put on your radar, this, that will not affect this year's budget, but things to be thinking about as we go into 2024's budget cycle, things we're going to have to think about for the future. Two main things I put on here, one is Department of Public Works. You know, they'll, they'll talk about this a lot in their presentation, but we're not getting fewer roads in town. You know, we, we're getting more roads. The cost has gone up to, for the materials to keep these roads in good condition, but we haven't been increasing the budget as far as roadway maintenance goes. Justin, can we get one light on in here? I just, I can't see my notes. Unless I get a small light or something. That works. So, you know, one of the things that is a little concerning to me is the way we do our roadway maintenance budget right now is we have about half of it funded in the operating budget and the other half is in a warrant article. That warrant article came, in my opinion, dangerously close to not passing last year. And if that happens, it's, there's going to be a noticeable effect because the roadway maintenance line, it's not just for gravel. It's everything from culvert repairs, you know, swales on the side of the road, it's, it's drainage, everything that goes along with building a roadway is all included in that one line for roadway maintenance, which is about $1.4 million. And so if you were to lose half of that through a warrant article, it would have a devastating effect. And again, John and Dave will talk a little bit more about this in their DPW presentation, but we're really going to have to think about what do we want to do there going forward so that we're having a good level of funding for what people expect in their, on their roadways in town. Other things, Public Works garage updates. I would encourage any of you from the budget committee or the council to meet Dave and Paul Shot down there one day and just take a walk around the facilities down there and you'll see what I mean about upgrades as far as coverings for vehicles, storage for items that are just being left outside and being weathered right now. You know, it's, it's another area that I, I believe is, we're going to have to address at some point. We get requests all the time to expand the drop-off center, and by expanding it, I mean the, having additional days and times. There'll be resources needed, that, that comes with the cost, but we do get more and more requests to have that expanded beyond what, what it is open right now. And then there's additional costs with cemetery maintenance as well. And then the other department that I think we've got to think about in the future is the recreation department. We've been operating with part-time employees in this department for, you know, as long as I can remember, since I was a kid here in town, working in the rec department. We, we mainly have three parts- the rec department. We mainly have three part-time employees. They're all quote-unquote retired. And I put that in there because they could decide at any time, they're done. And, you know, they, they do it because they like doing it now. But it's, it's, you've got a, a large rec department and a large community that is being run with three part-time retired folks who all do a great job, but they're not going to be here forever. We have more parks and fields than we had 30 years ago that we're taking care of now. We have more rec and travel programs for every season. The number of kids has kind of leveled off in the last 10 years, because one, school population growth hasn't been happening. That's kind of plateaued as well. And you also have kids now that are playing in these premier leagues. And so that takes them away from travel programs and rec programs. That being said, we're trying to offer more programs to keep them here in town. And so, you know, it's, it's something that, again, we're offering more programs, which means more volunteer hours, but more wear and tear in the fields. And then there are areas that have been neglected just because of our over-reliance on volunteers. We love volunteers. Volunteers make it happen, but they can only do so much. And, you know, there are, there are areas of neglect in certain areas for the rec, recreation. So again, I just bring it up to put it on your radar. There's nothing that I see us doing in this year's budget about it. But perhaps between now and next year, we can have continued discussions about where we want to go. And the last slide is just your, your schedule for the upcoming budget season. That's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
So just, I failed to mention this at the beginning. We're going target 12 o'clock to complete this presentation today. That's really up to all of you. So who's first up?
That would be Darren, Fire Department.
Okay, let's have it.
It's up to you. Kirby can change him, you can change him. You want Kirby to do it?
No.
Okay. Kirby, I might just need you to come up and bring up the fire.
We don't have the Fire Department presentation, I suppose. The fourth one, though. Oh, there it is.
Good morning.
Thanks, Chief. So I'm going to let the group know. If you have questions, let's field them as we go. Just get my attention. Chief?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I have with me newly promoted Deputy Chief Fred Heinrich. So we will be giving you our budget overview and presentation as we move forward.
Thank you.
So these are the topics. I'm not going to read each one of these off because that will take too long. But these are the topics that we're going to go over today, and the presentation will reflect as such. So the department's organizational structure, now with the new position of the Deputy Chief, there is four of us in the administrative role. So myself, Deputy Chief Heinrich, the Executive Assistant Suzanne Roy, and the Division Chief of Fire Prevention Brian Johnson. Going down from that, our operational staff is we have four Battalion Chiefs. Each is in charge of a certain role within the Fire Department. So Battalion Chief McGee is Communications. Right now, we're currently in the promotional process for the Battalion Chief on Battalion Two with the vacancy left behind by Deputy Heinrich. Battalion Three is Battalion Chief Zins. He's in charge of our facilities and call firefighter program. And then Battalion Four is Battalion Chief James Roger, which is in charge of hazmat training and special operations. Each battalion is broken down with three lieutenants, three firefighter paramedics, and four firefighter EMTs. What we're finding, we've been in the recruiting process now for, for a while, and we're finding, and it's industry-wide, that the availability now of paramedics is becoming a commodity. That they're very hard to come by. You don't see as many kids going to school for it anymore. So that's, you know, that's a challenge that we're facing now. Myself and Lisa have another round of interviews coming up this Tuesday. And, you know, we have a couple of laterals that are looking from other departments to come to Londonderry. So we're hoping that goes, goes well. But right now, we're, we're facing a situation that we've never faced before in reference to the amount of paramedic staff that we have on, on duty at one time. So these, each station, each station consists of, so both Station One and Station Two have a lieutenant, a firefighter paramedic, and a firefighter EMT at each station. And Central Station, when we're staffing at a level of 12, which we haven't been doing for a while now, is the Battalion Chief, one lieutenant. We strive for two firefighter paramedics, and then two firefighter EMTs, and then one dispatcher on.
Very different pictures than 15 years ago, the stations.
I do at the end. So this was our FY '21 operating budget. So the, the overall budget for the department was 7.8 million personnel costs. Out of that was 6.8 million. So 87, 80 per, every, 87% of the budget is on personnel costs. Operating cost was $462,000, and then the capital leasing program, $545,000. Generated revenue in FY '21 for the department was about $971,000. And that was through dispatch, ambulance service, and miscellaneous grants. I just put this slide in to show you some actuals for FY '21. So to the left is what was budgeted in those lines. And these, unfortunately, these are, these are lines we can't control. And to the right is the actual costs of what was spent in FY '21 for those particular lines. The only one that you'll see was a little lower. And I think that was due to, we were still in, part of the building was still in construction with the heat, heating costs was almost half of what was budgeted for. But all the rest, as you can see, were substantially over. These are annual maintenance and testing and certifications that we have to do every year. So I have a safety line in my budget of $38,000. Out of that, these are things that we, as I've indicated to the right, things that are required by statute. And then some of the things that we do for preventive maintenance that, again, extends the life of the apparatus. These are some of the grants that we received over this past year. So EMS in the warm zone, number two, that was another $6,000. And what that's used for, what we got out of that this time was different extrication equipment to get people out of like a mass casualty incident that's, you know, with the, like an active shooter or something like that. We were awarded the AFG grant for the breathing apparatus. And that DOJ grant was $73,000. That was, you know, COVID-related expenses and some of the overtime through a certain period of time. And then last month, we finally got the award that we were awarded the $40,000 for the EMPG grant, which is going to outfit our Training Room slash Emergency Operations Center with equipment coming, coming soon. This is 2020's calls for service. So Londonderry did 3,731 calls, Hampstead 1,073, and Pelham 1,439. So I dispatches, dispatched a total of 6,243 calls. Currently, we are sitting at 3,479. We're averaging about 12 calls a day. So my projection for the end of this calendar year is going to be about 4,100 calls. This breaks it down per district. So again, this was for 2020. Out of that, 3,731 calls. Station One did 1,076. Station Two, which is our busiest station, did 1,711. And then Central did 836. But what I want to explain with Central Station is these are the districts that, you know, the, the call is dispatched to or the response is to. But 99% of the time, Central is going to a stift, you know, whether it's the north or the south station. And then mutually given was 108 times. And what we're, you know, I bring this up every year, but what we're seeing now more and more is the amount of simultaneous calls that we're having. So over half of our calls in 2020, we had two or more calls going at the same time. And I broke it up all the way up until 10 calls, you know, at a time. So that just gives you a little indication on, unfortunately, it's not just one call at a time anymore. It's two, three, or four. So this is a little chart just showing our call volume over the last 10 years. 2018 was our peak thus far. I think this year, we're going to be very, very close to that, if not over it. 2020, obviously, we went down a little bit due to the pandemic. And then this is what I've seen change over the years, too. Our busiest days used to be like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Saturday. As you can see, they've all pretty much leveled off now, where there's really no, not one day that's busier than the other. Our response peak times are again, still from like 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Some of the default budget concerns that the Fire Department is facing, again, is, you know, keeping up with all of our testing and certification of the apparatus and equipment. The substations, you know, Station Two is 2006. Station One is now 11 years old as well. So these buildings are, you know, are starting to see that they're going to need some maintenance for different things. The preventive maintenance schedules and extended warranties that we buy on all the equipment. So our defibrillators, our stair chairs, our stretchers, to try and, you know, get the best, best bang for the buck. These, these warranties, you know, have a significant cost to them. And then what we've seen over the last six years is the increase in personal protective clothing. So the guy's gear has gone up 83%. This just shows you some of the, like I said, some of the concerns with our facilities that I'm looking at for the Maintenance Trust Fund. So this is Station Two. Again, when this building was built, there was a lot of value engineering done. So this is all just regular finger joint pine for the, for the soffits and everything that we're seeing a lot of rot on now. And then both of the, both of the facilities, like I said, one's 15 years old, the other one's 11 years old. They're, they're occupied 24 hours a day. And now what we're starting to see is the, the flooring in both of those stations are going to be in need of replacement. The capital account. So back when I started in 2013, I think I balanced at that time was like $83,000 in that capital account. And I, I appreciate your continued support for funding this account. And what, what it's used for is it's, it's used for equipment that no longer can be supported by the default operating budget. So again, I'll show you in, you know, in future slides, some of the costs of the equipment that we, that we pull out of this account. And what I've been trying to do is build that account up for the simple fact that we've used, we've used funds out of that account to, to use for matching funds for some of the grants that we've gotten. So none of that is coming out of the operating budget. So it's been very supportive for that. I mean, like I said, we, that SCBA grant that we just got of, you know, it was over $250,000 of free money, but there was a portion of that that we had to match. Some of the equipment that I'm talking about is, you know, these are different things that we have on the ambulances. So the stretchers now, you know, they're $22,000 apiece. There's four of them. Stair chairs, you know, they're $4,000 apiece. There's five of those. The auto pulses, $4,500 apiece. There's four of those. And then the defibrillators that we have on the apparatus. Those are $37,000 apiece, and there's eight of them. And like the town manager said, prices of equipment and everything are definitely not going down. So this was a warrant article that I was going to request after speaking with the town manager. We've decided to put this off for another year. And we're going to keep attempting. We've gone for this now. So what this is, is a, it's a device that is updated in the back of the ambulance that basically, once you attach the stretcher to it, it lifts the stretcher back into the ambulance. Unfortunately, we're finding people are getting bigger and bigger. And this device here assists in, like I said, getting the stretcher in the back of the ambulance to prevent injuries. And I'd say 90% of the injuries that we've had over at the Fire Department have been lifting-related injuries due to, due to this piece of equipment right here. So like I said, we've, we've tried for grants for this now twice. We've been turned down twice. We're going to look at other sources of funding throughout time. But I'd just like you to keep this in mind going forward, that I think it's a vital piece of equipment that this is going to help with the health and safety of our firefighters. Future challenges is obviously our organizational restructuring and implementation and future succession planning within the organization. I think you're going to see probably within the next year to three years, most of the Fire Department's command staff is going to be retired and moved on. So there's a whole new upcoming command staff from, from younger company officers that are going to take over. So it's getting ready for that. The continued increase in call volume, the assisted living facilities that keep us busy. And now with the Baldwin's coming in over to Woodmont Commons, I can only imagine what that's going to request for service. We're seeing still the constant request for service for the urgent cares, the increased traffic on the public roadways, and, you know, just meeting the service needs of the citizens and our businesses within our community while the town continues to grow. Our goals and objectives are going to be continuing the process of redrafting the department's standing operating procedures, identify the need for future increasing in staffing and restructuring of the department's organizational chart to meet the demands of the community. And we're going to continue to identify and pre-plan for increase in service for demands for the department with future developments and growth projected in town. And obviously, we're going to maintain a high level of training and professionalism with department personnel to ensure that we will continue to meet the needs of this community and mitigate all requests for services that we are called upon. So, like I said, this is, this is how we've evolved over the last 15 years for our facilities. So there's the old Station One that now is the parking lot of the senior center. Our old Station Two, which is still sits behind the Cokesstop Restaurant, and obviously Central Station over the last year or so. So in conclusion, thank you for taking the time to listen to the Fire Department presented budget essential for providing mission-critical services to our community and listening to the future goals and needs as we have identified by increasing demands in the fire service of today. Thank you very much.
Questions for the chief? So chief, would, go ahead, I'm, go ahead, please. I didn't, I didn't see you.
That's okay. I just have not really a question. I, I know there were a few little requests in here. For me personally, I would like to see it prioritized. Like, it's just a list. Like, if there was one thing you could get, what would be the number one? You know what I mean? And then if there was two, you know, what would your priorities be for an immediate, you know, needs for the things that you were thinking you may need in the future? If I could see that prioritized, I would appreciate it. If I could see that prioritized, I would appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much.
So chief, along with the additional calls for service, are we seeing the length of a call extend?
The length?
So in other words, it used to take us fifteen minutes to clear a call. I don't know what it takes to clear a call. And now it takes thirty minutes. I, I'm making a generalization.
So by all means, we are. And part of the problem, majority of our ambulance calls are being slowed down by the hospitals. Parkland Medical Center has gone on diversion a number of times, up to thirty hours in a row. So a local hospital that we go to a lot with a quicker turnaround time going on diversion, which means they don't want any more patients, is now forcing us to go to other hospitals that are further away. Additionally, all of the hospitals are getting busy. So we're struggling to transfer our patients to the staff. And unfortunately, we're, we're transferring these patients a lot of times to a bed in a hallway. And there's no nurse that's really assigned to that patient. So getting that person safely changed over, giving a report, and then getting back in service. And then finally, we're still in the middle of COVID. So if we have a patient that is either COVID positive or suspected COVID, our ambulance comes back out of service. Normally, they come back in service, take another call. If we think it's a COVID-related patient, we'll come back out of service, we'll decon the ambulance, we'll give the ambulance about fifteen minutes with a combination of a fogger and a UV light, and then we'll go back in service so that we know that for the next patient, the, the, the atmosphere is sterile and we're not going to continue transmission. So by all means, our ambulance calls have definitely turned a lot longer than they used to.
Yes.
Not a question, just a thought that occurred to me while you're doing your presentation. You mentioned the Baldwins, I know we have other assisted living facilities that are probably excellent for our community. I don't know what other communities are doing, and I wonder if there's a model we could use that would keep our first-run ambulances from having to respond to, I don't know how you phrase it, lower-level medical calls at those, at those facilities. Could we work with them to contract with a private ambulance? Could we somehow encourage them, assist them to have a, you know, nurse practitioner kind of person on site to assess priorities, just to keep our ambulances available for the true emergencies, but yet still provide the services that those facilities are obviously going to need? Don't know what that might look like, but a thought.
So part of our challenge is not only the fire departments, and I mean all the fire departments, are struggling to hire good quality people, in particular paramedics, but good quality people. The privates are struggling more. Manchester's ambulance AMR is, is on a port of failure right now. They walked away from a contract that they had with Candia. Poor Candia, twenty-seven calls a day, AMR said, we're done. Hooks and a lot of other communities are trying to help them. They're trying to build an ambulance program overnight. But unfortunately, a lot of these private ambulance companies are struggling as much, if not more than we are. The assisted living do pretty well. I mean, they really want to keep their, their patient, their, their residents in-house for a number of reasons. One of them is COVID. They don't want to send them to a hospital, have them get COVID at the hospital, and now bring back COVID to their facility. So they've been really trying hard not to send people. Unfortunately, a doctor's office, if you call and say, hey, I have this complaint, do you have any COVID symptoms? Well, I have kind of coughed, don't come into our office. So then they feed them to the convenient urgent cares and they triage them as well. So there's a cascading effect we're still dealing with with COVID. But by all means, the hospitals would love not to have more patients as well. And I don't have a really great answer on that.
So I can tell you from personal experience, my, my youngest daughter's in maternity, labor, and delivery at the Elliott. They put out an old call, they're down forty-six RNs in the hospital and down forty-seven LPNs. They're down fourteen in labor and delivery and maternity. They're just, they're just not there. So I think we're seeing, where they went, who knows? I don't have an answer for that. But what I do know is, is that we do have a provision within our Woodmont Development Agreement that once we reach a critical point of service and that community has, you know, contributed to it, that we have an agreement to fund a additional station and personnel to start servicing those areas. So I would think that once we reach that point, in conjunction with that, we would need to address the other thousand homes that we have as well that aren't going to get any younger. So I do, that's why I brought it up in my opening presentation, is this is something we have to start thinking about. You know, we went down this path a few years ago in putting defibrillators in all the police cars, the DPW trucks, and ambulances and everything else, and training everybody so that we can respond faster than average response, is seven minutes still? Average?
Yeah, we have some challenges, there's.
Well, we needed a defibrillator in four minutes, right? So now we have how many defibrillators in the field?
Oh, the police, I believe, have eight or ten. The highway department has four, so.
And then we have another eight.
Oh, and then we have one on every one of our vehicles, no matter what it is, whether it's my staff car or if it's an ambulance fire truck or any other vehicle.
And then all of our public buildings have them. So we have over fifty defibrillators in the field. So I think we're going in the right direction, we just can't, we can't get there fast enough because we, it, it takes money. But, you know, I think we're taking the right steps, yes, Deb?
On this whole topic, on one of your slides, you, you referenced the increased traffic on roads. And we know that's only going to get worse. Any ideas on how you're going to circumvent that? Is there any plans that will have like, just like, I don't know what they would call them, but in the city, they have like units parked in certain high-risk areas that sit there all day, kind of like a mobile fire station or emergency or EMT station, really. And they know that this certain neighborhood has a lot more calls per se than another one. And then they have that unit deploy. Have you guys even thought about how you're going to address traffic? I mean, we're hearing seven minutes, and we all know the roads aren't wide enough, you add snow, it's even worse, people don't pull over. There's a plethora of questions.
A little last year, I'd say we've, we've changed our, you know, our response cards probably two or three times now just to find out or just trying to figure out what is the most effective way to serve the community. So during COVID, we had all of our ambulances coming out of Central Station to try and lessen, lessen the amount of individuals that had to go on the call. And then probably within the last three or four months, I went back to the model that we had prior to COVID, which was every, every district handled their own medical calls. But what we're finding is the amount of times that I was calling for mutual aid because I was losing more people at a, at a time to, to respond on these calls. And like Fred had mentioned, the, the turnover time at the hospitals now is significantly increased. So the amount of time that I had people out of town, we saw the use for not only callback for our own staff, but the use of mutual aid to other communities. So now we have reverted back to the first-out ambulances back out of Central again. We find that we have a lot more people in town to deal with our own emergencies versus calling people in from other, from other.
I just know that like in the cities, they're not putting money in the infrastructure of the fire stations. They're putting them in these like mobile units. And they're planting them around, and they have a lot more mobile units because it's just, it's A, it's more cost-effective than it keep expanding, expanding, expanding. And the biggest call is for EMT. So I don't, I don't know if, you know, if that's something way in the future that should be looked at. But it's, it's definitely something I think that should be on the horizon.
So having done that on a, on a private ambulance for, for years, yes, by all means, they post ambulances in locations where there's high needs. And that is a terrific system when you're doing one thing, and that's ambulances. Unfortunately for us, I can't tell you what the next call in our South District is, whether it's going to be a fire, whether it's going to be an ambulance. And by keeping them in their quarters as much as possible, we have both of those options available to respond to whatever the next emergency is. But yeah, by all means, when you're, when you're running just ambulances, that's a terrific way of adjusting to the demands of both time and, and volume. But it's kind of tough for us right now.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying if we tend to grow, you know, I keep seeing the number thirty-three thousand, that's a lot of people in this town, which means a lot more traffic on these roads, which means a lot more needs. So I'm just thinking in the future, just to have our eyes on something would be a smart thing to do.
Yeah, and by all means, and I'm not advocating for additional personnel right now, but as we grow with personnel, you'll probably see our second ambulance be stationed at Station two, where it's the busiest area so that they're in that area already, not having to, to get from here to there. But that's in our, more of a distant future. But yeah, I mean, unfortunately, you're right, stations are not always in the best locations all the time.
Yes, Joe.
Go ahead, I saw you first.
On the striker loading system, do other towns have that in place? Have you seen it and, and very successful?
Yeah, actually, I mean, and don't get me wrong, Lonley Derry's apparatus is second to none, but what we are finding now with, with a lot of the area, area departments around that their ambulances are. So the new one that we will order will have this system into it, so they'll be built into the leasing price.
I see.
But what I'm trying to do now and what that was for is to update the current ambulances that we have to put that system in.
Why not just get, shoot for two instead, maybe that's the number?
Shoot with five?
Go for two instead, instead of, try that.
So, so part of what happened is a couple of years ago, we saw the growing size of our patients. And we decided to invest in a ramp and a, basically a winch and a ramp and the ability to get a bigger cot in the future so that we could safely kind of reel people into the ambulance. Luckily, we haven't needed that as much as we have. A lot of our patients, when we talk of larger patients, are in the six hundreds. This, this system that we put in was designed for even bigger patients, and luckily, we haven't needed that. So we chose one of the two systems and looking back, we, it would have been more money for the striker loading system, but I think it would have been more useful at the time. But we weren't really sure where our demographic was, we're going with nursing homes and other facilities.
So you said earlier that EMTs are hard to come by, and I noticed on the proposed budget that you had a savings in regular salaries of about seventy-two thousand, but you also had an uptick in overtime of sixty-three thousand. Is that because you're, you're saying, well, that position that I can't fill right now has to be funded through overtime use?
Yeah, so currently, we got, we got three new employees starting on the fifteenth, but I have been down six employees now for, I'd say, probably the last nine months. We've had a lot of retirements this year. I think, you know, we've lost over probably a hundred and fifty years of actual service from the four or five employees that I've lost. So I'm excited to say, yes, we have three, we have three starting on the fifteenth, I have three more to go. And those positions have been being filled with overtime.
Yeah, I could see that, that's where the approved, you know, the budget actually increased, the delta in, in the increase from previous years. I just, although you're budgeting less money than you have in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one in the actuals on the overtime, just wanted to see what that uptick was, and it sounds like we hit, we hit the nail on the head, okay? Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything else? Yes?
Chief, have we lost paramedics to other towns?
We have not.
Okay, thank you.
I had, I have lost probably two or three employees that went to the city of Concord, but that was over a period of time, probably within the last five, six years. You know, I've had a couple of paramedics come to me that said they have been recruited or spoken to by other towns, but they have chosen not to do so. But yeah, that's, that's the markets that's out there right now. Everybody's just cutting each other's throat to try and get these people, you know, which is, it's sad.
And we're finding that the private companies are struggling even worse than we are.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay, anything further for fire? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a couple of minutes while, while the police department, is the police department next?
Yes.
While the police department gets ready, let's take a couple of minutes.
Up and down.
Okay. It's a Jeep come along.
Slowly now, it's getting cold, it's hard to weld. I gotta open the garage to weld the sheet metal.
I was welding the other day last week. My wife comes downstairs, she goes, and I got earplugs in because it's metal and stuff, and I'm banging on her welder. Chief comes in, she opens the fast door.
I mentioned it to him, I don't know if you could follow up, that'd be great. I actually have access to my email now. Finally, I was able to touch base with IT and get that taken care of.
Okay, yep.
Could have had one of the EMT calls.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a flex core welder. You're not supposed to breathe that shit.
Oh, really?
I have to open the garage door. But it's getting cold out now, so it's going to make it hard to weld.
They're all on.
They're all on.
Closed-in place, so.
Yeah, I was speaking to a couple of engineer people I know for corporation. Geothermal is a big thing now, and I just told Kevin, we really should look into that. Because if we look at how much money we've spent over the last ten years replacing and fixing HVACs. The cost of geothermal was. And then you'd have no heating.
Well, I can just control right here. Yeah, you wanna?
Let me know when you're ready, gentlemen. Yeah?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're ready. If everybody's here.
Anyone sees anyone out in the hallway, can you ask them to join us? Please? Okay, Chief, please proceed.
Good morning, I'm Bill Hart, I'm the police chief here in town, as many of you know. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about the police department, its work and its budget. High overview of our budget, it's a default year. We won't be asking for any specifics within the budget. That said, we, as the town manager indicated, will be talking about the need to expand the spending in the area of IT. As has been part of our process over the last more than a decade now, we use the budget process as an opportunity for succession planning, and that moment of succession planning is coming closer and closer. One of these days, it's gonna be my last budget process. So this year, the budget will be presented by Deputy Chief Bernard, and congratulations on his recent promotion. The airport side of the budget will be presented by Captain Gandia, who was faced with a lot of challenges this year with the COVID-19 situation, the degradation of passenger traffic on a day-to-day basis, and a, a new airline coming in, all of which he'll address. It did have an impact on our budget and how we work. And lastly, Tom Roy, who handles our IT matters, will be talking about the need for expanded potential spending in that area. Couple of things, very much like the fire department, we saw a decrease over the COVID times. It's beginning to come right back. Captain Bernard, or Deputy Chief Bernard will speak about how our calls have changed a little bit. So all these have an impact. We've been ten years under default, and with that, I will turn it over to Deputy Chief Bernard and Captain Gandia.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, thank you very much for your time and efforts today. I'll be presenting on the airport division. Again, it's always an honor to be able to present on our activities up at the airport to serve New Hampshire's largest transportation critical infrastructure. As you can see, there's a picture of Air Force Two behind you. That was from one of our V-ponys trips from last year. We had a lot of VIP visits last year, which kept us extremely busy. And again, it goes to show that the airport is, is very much a magnet for a lot of critical events that do take place within our estate through these visits. As the chief mentioned, there's been a lot of challenges, particularly with the airport and aviation in general. Those challenges stems from economic challenges, staffing challenges, travel restriction challenges, and also passenger challenges. However, you know, anytime that we, we have adversity, that I find that that's an opportunity to build our endurance and strengthen our character, and then it brings us hope. And with that, when we see these challenges, I like to look at them as opportunities. So within the airport, one of the largest opportunities that we were able to take when things had kind of slowed down with the travel was our training initiatives. Training initiatives are extremely important for various reasons. It helps build our skill level, helps build our stakeholder skill levels. And, but I think most importantly, it's a relationship-building function between us and all those that work at the airport. With that, whoops. I think one of my slides got messed up here. All right, well, we'll push on. What you're not seeing here is, well, I'll talk about it. It's not in the picture that you're seeing on the slide, but we had done some vulnerability assessments at the airport. We looked at the critical areas within the airport that were in need of some attention, one being the checkpoint and the other being ticket counters. With that, we combined our efforts with TSA, and we did our third phase of our checkpoint training, which was called breaking contact in case there was a threat that presented itself within the checkpoint. This basically was a built-on foundation from our two prior trainings with TSA. Over the last couple of years, we had done some active threat training at their checkpoint, and we also had done some gunshot awareness. In addition to that, we looked at our ticket counters, and we combined our forces with the airlines, and we did active threat training, bringing some training regarding situational awareness, environmental awareness, and de-escalation techniques to the ticket counter agents, again, building strong relationships with our airline partners. The next slide that you see here is Southern New Hampshire Special Operations Unit. A few weeks ago, this regional SWAT team came to the airport. They've comprised about forty to fifty tactical officers. They represent about fourteen different agencies within the state of, the southern part of New Hampshire here. And they're basically our first responder to any major critical incident that we may have at the airport. So for them to come to the airport and have familiarity is extremely important. While they're at the airport, they get to get first hands-on scene of our garage, our terminal, and tours of our airport operations area. In addition to that, we also have very strong relationships with Southwest. We were able to ascertain one of their aircrafts and allow the team to do some aircraft breaching and things that we normally would not have access to in our routine day-to-day operations. So you can see in that other slide here, that's actually the SWAT Bearcat that's pulled up to a Southwest plane, and they're looking at breaching heights between the, the Bearcat and the aircraft itself. Oh, I guess my, my slide is up there, it just got out of order. This is the, the training I talked about, the breaking contact with TSA that we had partnered with. What you're seeing at that slide right there is TSA, and they're working with one of our instructors, which is Officer A.J. Marciano. And again, just to illustrate, that, that training basically focused on if there was a threat within the checkpoint, and it presented itself in that immediate fashion, how to keep TSA safe and how to disengage from that threat and let others know what's happening around them and getting law enforcement to the scene there. And again, as I talked about previously, this is an illustration of our active threat training that we did with the airline ticket counters. We had done some scenario-based training, and again, going over environmental awareness, situational awareness, and de-escalation techniques. That role player that you see that's actually standing in the, in the baggage area there, that's one of the Federal Air Marshals that we used as a role-playing, and, you know, we had great success with that. In addition to our training that we've done, we've also trained our patrol tactics as our patrol is our first responders to any incident that may happen at the airport. We're the first on-scene responders, so again, making sure that they have certain knowledge about certain things that we have on the AOA. This here includes aircraft boarding. It also includes how to disable an aircraft so it cannot take off. So we partnered again up with TSA and FAMs and also Southwest to have access to their plane, and went over all the policy and procedures and the techniques that we are able to do that to keep a plane grounded if we need to. As we all know, within the last year, since January, FA has reported that there's been about five thousand unruly passenger incidents in the air. MHT, we're, we're no exception to that. We've actually had to remove a handful of passengers off of planes or have to deal with, you know, unruly passengers that are flying inbound. And at an occasion, we've actually had to remove some people from the terminal based on their behaviors. With this here, we, we partnered with the Federal Air Marshals. That's the next slide that you see there. We're actually on an aircraft, and we're going through some passenger removal tactics. Also keeping in mind that optics are extremely important and sensitive for not only us, but also for the airlines and the airport itself. So, you know, different methods and ways that we can remove passengers in, in kind of a low optic method and fashion helps carry that mission. So now I'm moving into the, the airport recovery here. As you can see on this slide, that this is from two thousand and two. I think you may have recalled this slide from last year. This is a, you can see where we went from, we're averaging about twenty-five hundred passengers a day. In basically February into March, we saw a steep decline when the pandemic hit, and that's where it started affecting our, our airline travel. And we went from twenty-five hundred a day, and look at April, was our lowest point that month. Our average for the month of April was a hundred and thirteen passengers a day. So very, very low numbers. It kind of, it rose a little bit, and then it kind of flatlined. But again, going into the next slide here, this is again where we talk about our hope, right? So our recovery portion of how we've been dealing with over the last year since January of this year, our year-to-date numbers. You can see we started out pretty low at five hundred and forty-four in the month of January, but then we steadily increased, and once we started hitting the summer months, we started breaking the thousand barrier, which was a big goal and milestone for us. And then once we hit, you know, midsummer, we started bouncing into about eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred. We had a slow little dip once summer ended in September, but then you'll notice that in October, we actually crested two thousand. So again, pushing back into our pre-pandemic numbers. That was with the arrival of Spirit Airlines, which then brought in some, some new passenger loads into our, to our terminal. So again, there's our recovery, and now we're moving into our airport growth. As I mentioned, Spirit Airlines started operating on October seventh. They're now bringing in five destinations to our airport. We started off with Orlando and Fort Lauderdale in the month of October. And then into November, we included Tampa and Fort Myers now. And then happy to announce that also in April, they're adding Myrtle Beach, which I think is gonna be a popular destination. The picture that you see right there is actually the, the first flight into the airport. It was getting the water cannon treatment from our fire department. And it was actually really kind of a monumental moment for the, the airport and the leadership. Ted Kitchens and his crew, the, the tireless months and months of effort that they put into getting this airline here. And for the last seventeen years, we saw airlines slip away, and this is the first time that we actually brought an airline back on board. So it was a, a huge goal, a lot of credit to MHT Admin, their leadership in doing this. The other thing I was happy to announce is that there's a new cargo terminal location that is actually now currently under construction up at the airport. The picture that you're now seeing is the location of that terminal is going to be. It sits right in between the admin center and the terminal. There's two large warehouses that are there right now, and probably within the next couple of months, those will be removed, and the construction of the actual terminal itself will start to be built. So where does that leave us in terms of our airport division, our annual budget? Again, I also like to remind, most of us know here already, but the, our budget is not funded by taxpayers. This is completely through the airport itself with the assistance of some federal funds. Has no taxpayer impact. In fact, there is an administrative revenue stream that does come in from the airport to the town of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So again, it's just a, an important note that I want to make sure that we all understand. You'll notice that in these bar graphs here, that in, I think it's two thousand and twenty, it was at two point five million dollars. That had been static for probably about seven or eight years. Then two thousand and twenty-one, it went down to two point one million. That was the effects of the pandemic and COVID in our staffing. You'll see that the current fiscal year that we're in right now, two thousand and twenty-two, is at two point seven million. We brought some staffing back to the airport. Again, going back with the airport growth, rose our numbers back up for our annual budget. And then for basically our projected fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget, we're standing at just over two point nine million dollars. You'll notice between the two years, that's a two hundred and eight thousand dollar increase. So of that increase, right now, we're under discussions with the airport about adding a twelfth officer position because of the growth that they're seeing in passenger loads, cargo, which is a wonderful thing. So of that two hundred and eight thousand, and that officer, that comprises about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which includes salary and healthcare costs. The other eighty-three thousand dollars of that two hundred and eight thousand represents CPI adjustments, COLA adjustments, and also anticipated healthcare increases as well. And with that, I'd like to leave it. This, this nice photo, that the spirit at the airport is very strong, so. Any questions on the airport division?
Please correct me if I'm wrong, but what, we have a contract to provide law enforcement services to the airport?
We do, yes.
What's the status of that contract?
That's a great question. Right now, we are under a two-year renewal. We're right in between contracts. We're gonna be renewing again in July, so for another two-year extension. So we're in our third two-year extension, we have two more.
Great. Any rumblings of them going out to bid at some point?
Not at all. I've, I've had no word of that. Again, this goes back to our strong relationships at the airport. Since Captain Dusso took over law enforcement as a division commander through Paul Flone and, and our team that we have up there right now. Our mission is to continue building strong relationships because the service that we bring there is extremely important for the airport, for the community, and for our department. And again, this is something that we do on a daily basis. We, we don't rest on our laurels. We make sure that the relationships continue to be strong, and, and hopefully that when these contracts, you know, when eyes look on them again, there is no discussion because the service that we bring there is top-notch.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the airport? So we've been, we have a regular relationship with, with the airport director, Ted Kitchens. He was hired by a committee in which we, I served on, along with the mayor of Manchester, and who just won reelection. So I think our relationship with the airport remains to be, you know, very, very good. And our relationship with Mayor Craig is very good, too. So we look forward to working with him going forward. Townside. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, good morning. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kim Bernard, and I am in charge of the Operations Bureau of the Police Department. I oversee the day-to-day operations with lieutenants of various shifts, days, afternoons, and midnights. We also oversee the day-to-day functions of our detective bureau. Keeping in mind, for the time, we're trying to make these slides as efficient and as quick as possible. I will do my best to highlight everything in here for you. One of the first goals of our, is our strategic goal always is to effectively budget, manage our budget. With that said, year after year, this one is up here because it's our primary goal. Without that, we can't perform our job, and we need to obviously come in budget to affect. Without that, we can't perform our job and we need to obviously come in budget to effectively manage our day-to-day. Our recruitment and training and supervision, this is a year-round, ongoing effort for the department, much like the fire department everywhere else. We're trying to continually keep a list of eligible officers ready to go. We find that we are going through a history here, coming and goings of retirements, much like the fire department, where people have been on the job 20, 25 years and moving on. So, right now, we're looking at potentially three officers in the next six months leaving our agency. I'll talk about where we're at with recruitment a little bit later on, a different slide. Training and supervision. Strong supervision and leadership are the keys that we like to bring to the officers of London Dairy Police Department, so they learn the London Dairy way to police our community. We're very selective in who we bring into our team to represent us, to serve you. So, we're very stringent in who we hire for our agency. I'll talk about that in a moment. Community partnerships, it's always an important one for us as an agency. Without our community, we'll have a difficult time. And I think it's important that we maintain that trust and relationship with our community on many levels. Obviously, due to the pandemic, we were not able to do a lot of the usual community programs that we have done in the past. We miss them dearly. We're going to start bringing those back forward here sooner than later. A couple of those community programs that we've lacked unfortunately are the Christmas movie nights with the police and the police department. We always enjoy doing that. Pumpkin painting with the kids in the community, that's something that we've lacked. And the Dare, excuse me, Dare program, the Explorer program. Explorer program has been on hold due to COVID and we've had a lot of youth in our community and parents alike asking us to get that back up and running. So again, that's one of the programs that we're looking to get highlighted and back up as soon as possible. And then lastly, the enhanced information technology. Captain Cheatham is out sick today. He was going to talk on this area here. As Chief Hart mentioned, Tom Roy, our IT man, is in the house to help us out with the IT needs. Give you a little historical data. As you can see here, the calls for service, incident reports, accidents, arrests, and overdose, and vehicle stops. We show a decline here for obvious reason, COVID. We pulled back on our proactive measures during COVID to keep our officers as safe as possible. We still had calls for service. We just changed some of those responses from in-person to either over the phone or in the front lobby, depending what the call was and the nature of it. As you can see here, the arrests are down and vehicle stops are down. However, our calls for motor vehicle complaints are on the rise. Some of you know that I sit, as well as Chief Hart, on the Traffic Safety Committee and we get a lot of complaints for speed. And as Ms. Paul would indicate, the same thing, we get a lot of trucking complaints from various roads in town. So, we had to pull back on that a lot because again, officer contact. But now we're back up and running full force. We've got numerous assignments that are out in play right now for speed enforcement, trucking enforcement. And much like Consular Farrell mentioned about grants and finding ways and money, we use a lot of grants to offset patrol overtime costs. So there are grants available. We try to find those, traffic safety grants, and we use those at times when we can to take care of some of the needs of speed and enforcement in our community. As far as incident reports go, they are down right now, but again, I think all these are going to trend right back and level off to where we were before the year's over. Much like the fire department, as you guys discussed earlier, we as well have noticed that our calls are taking longer and longer. And with that, it's because over the last few years, the complexity of the crimes are more time-consuming, such as ID frauds, financial crime investigations, to name a few, social security scams and extortion emails alike. Normally, officers will respond to a basic call. They're done and out there 10, 15 minutes, depending on what it is. These calls here are taking a lot longer. These calls can last anywhere from a half an hour to an hour of the officer's initial time in contact with our citizens. Then they come back into the station and they start working on the report. There, that's time-consuming as well. And then from that, they get sent up to our detective bureau. Our detective bureau is currently down one detective. We had Detective Tarikowski, she retired last month and she's moved on to the private sector. So, currently, our detective bureau, they're handling anywhere from 20 cases each up to more. And along with the time consumption that it takes, the detective bureau, they're also conducting backgrounds for our agency for new hires, as well as assisting the fire department with theirs. So, these calls for service are not 10, 15-minute calls anymore. We mentioned this last year in one of our PowerPoints. This was the FY21 department objectives, but these are carrying on from here on out. But I just wanted to touch base on you, with you on these from last year. LEAC. Information on LEAC, for those that you don't recall, the LEAC was Law Enforcement, Accountability, Community, and Transparency. This was put in place by Governor Sununu. And Governor Sununu had put together a commission. And we were so lucky that when the governor reached out, he asked for a member of our agency, Lieutenant Mark Morrison, who is seated in the back today. Lieutenant Mark Morrison was a key member of this panel. Lieutenant Morrison's efforts, going to these weekly meetings, coming back to our agency and filling us in. And Mark is not the only one in our department who has been requested to participate in outside panels or boards or commissions. Chief Hart has been asked numerous times and Captain Cheatham. This goes to show you that outside of here, people do look at us and want our participation and our input. And with the governor's LEAC recommendations, they were signed into law. And just a little pat on the back, we'd like to obviously put some of this on to Lieutenant Morrison. And the amount of time that he had to devote to doing this is unbelievable. And Mark's professionalism is, well, we'll talk about that next in CLEIA. So the LEAC, some of those recommendations, just to tell you again, that was about training and some reporting of police misconduct, things of that nature. Going into the CLEIA accreditation, for those of you who don't know that, CLEIA stands for the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. So in short, what this means is it marks a level of professional excellence. And this right here has been an ongoing task again from Mark Morrison, who has put in countless hours of revamping policies, procedural stuff, the support of Chief Hart to oversee this, and obviously with your support, day in and day out, when this thing has started two years ago. With the work of our community, Mark, Chief Hart, we are pleased to announce to you all today that we are going to achieve our gold standard. Your gold standard, our agency, is being recognized on November 19th. We've completed and we are going to be one of 28, 19,000 roughly agencies in the United States. 19,000 law enforcement agencies and only 5% of them achieved this goal. And we are going to be one of them. So once again, we're proud to put London Dairy on the map for you all. And internally, it's a prestigious thing for us to know that we are one of the few in New Hampshire that are on that. So, November 19th, we'll be on a meeting with them live, a Zoom if you would call it, and we should report back to you with the gold standard. Next portion is the eight, can't wait. This is one of the topics that was talked about in police reform over the last couple of years. The eight can't wait campaign. Just to give you a quick update on those, that was the banning of chokeholds, strangulation holds, requiring departments to teach de-escalation training, requiring warning shots before shooting, alternatives before shooting, a duty to intervene, ban shooting from moving vehicles, require use of force continuum, and requiring comprehensive reporting. On that, again, a sense of pride for our agency, and this goes back for many years. This wasn't anything that we had to change. These recommendations were made for police reform throughout the United States, but to reiterate, our agency, we never did those. We were never, those aren't in our policies. We didn't train our officers that way. It's important to know that that's not the type of police department that we are. It's not the police department that you guys want us to be, and it's not what our community deserves. So, we really, on that one there, we checked off the box, which helped us also with our CLEIA. And going on to the next portion, it's the officer training. Right now, we're playing catch-up. So, much like other agencies, training was shut down for in-service training. Training was shut down for extra hours that officers are supposed to get other than firearms and defensive tactics. So, by year's end, we should be up to where we need to be. It's a short list, but we're on roll there to get that completed. And the training division, obviously, this has been, it was a very difficult time for them, but they had to get creative on how to still manage to get us to where we needed to be. So, Captain Cheatham's crew in the training division, they were able to get us linked into some online trainings to meet those goals in the short run. We finished those and moving on to community programs, as you can see here, we talked about that briefly. The RAD program, Explorers program, those are an important integral part to our community. And community programs, I think people look forward to them. I know we do. We enjoy them. Getting out there with our community helps build that bond and that trust that is so important. It's vital for our agency to work with our community. So, we're working on those in the next several months, getting that back up and running. And again, Captain Cheatham is not here to discuss the recruitment update, but I will give you a quick fill-in where we're at. So, right now, we have three officers who are in field training. A couple of them should be done next four to six weeks-ish. We have three currently in the police academy right now, and from all reports, they're doing outstanding. And then we have three more slated to attend the next academy in January. So we're on track where we need to be. Important to know that it's not hiring a police officer while some may think that it's an easy process. This takes time. And it takes time because, for example, in the last two to three years, we've had roughly 380 to 400 applicants who wanted to be a London Dairy officer. We've narrowed those down over the last two to three years and we have given 40 conditional offers. A conditional offer is telling somebody, we are interested in you, we think you might be a good fit, and we're going to conduct a background investigation. So backgrounds, while people may think that they're quick, they're not. They're very time-consuming. And I just want to highlight some of those things with you, that of those 40, you know, it's about 40 to 60 hours of a detective's time to do a background, a thorough background. Again, to highlight that we try to bring in the best candidates to be your officers for your community. We don't want to just hire anybody. We want people that fit the London Dairy mold. It's important to you, it's important to us. So, we put a lot of time in our backgrounds. Just to reiterate that, is 40 hours to 60 hours in a background for one candidate. They're also doing financial crimes backgrounds. They're also doing juvenile crime matters. They're dealing with other kinds of frauds, thefts, burglaries, overdoses, untimely deaths. We manage our time as best we can. And these, obviously, are trying times in law enforcement. We do our best and I think that we've strived to give you guys the best, the office, the best officers that this community deserves. And we're going to continue to do that going forward. And there's one slide here, I'm just gonna, I'll jump back to you in a minute. Police work today is 20% lights and sirens. It's 80% information technology and it's 100% about the people. So I just want to share that we have a vision or a field in our police department. If it's important to our community, it's important to us. When you folks bring things to our attention, we hear you. We want to work with you. We want to address those concerns. So, with that, I would like to call up our IT guy, Mr. Tom Roy, to talk about the request for allocation.
As Deputy Chief said, this is about 80% information technology. It's huge. And when I joined London Dairy Police about 16 months ago, one of my immediate tasks was to evaluate IT, its deficiencies, its needs, evaluate contracts, where we were with them, consolidation of contracts, and just take a look at all of that. And one thing we found is that we're short of funds and that's what we wanted to talk about here. We're asking for a warrant article of $100,000 to add to the IT budget. And that focuses on a few different areas. One of them, cybersecurity. As Town Manager mentioned very early on in his presentation, cyber attacks are on the rise everywhere. They've happened many, many places here, just in New Hampshire alone and across the country. So we're constantly taking a look at that, wanting to add to that and increase our security. Another area is our internet services. The whole town in a whole and in the police department, we're running on older technology. With internet services, we're running on cable, Comcast cable, and it's inefficient, it's outdated. We want to look at fiber and increasing speeds and increasing that technology. And then the third area is, and it's one of our slides here, which is coming up as well, is a new RMM replacement system, RMS, and our dispatch software. That's roughly 14 years old that we're running today. It's a system that's getting outdated. It's, it does have an end of life coming up in the next few years, so we're starting in the next few months and anticipating over the next year to 18 months of rolling into something new with that. We have some vendors that we're talking to now and taking a look at those. Pretty much everybody here in Southern New Hampshire is going to be tasked with this. Everybody runs one system today, IMC in Southern New Hampshire, and that's a system that's coming to end of life. So we'll be taking a look at that.
Questions?
I have one question. Are you guys running a hybrid thing? I know the town's moving to Office 365 with email going to the cloud and everything like that, which kind of makes sense, but just curious, are you guys thinking like moving hybrid, half-cloud, like for that communication stuff and other local stuff? Because I know you've got Active Directory, domain controllers, virtual machines, everything like that, spam and all this stuff, all these different upgrades. So I was just kind of curious, are we just going to still stick with the hybrid model instead of 100% on the cloud?
We are running a hybrid today. We're a little bit further along than the town with Office 365. We've been working on that and one of my goals is by the end of the year to have everybody migrateed to Office 365. If we can move it to the cloud, we're looking at it. It's a little bit different for us than the town because we have security and CEGIS requirements that the town doesn't. Like these RMS systems, a lot of those aren't in the cloud. They're premise-based because of the data that we're sharing with that.
That's, that was my concern about that because we, I'm an IT guy by trade, so we deal with ITAR, which is government contacts and stuff like that. One of the biggest problems we noticed was on the cloud is it's hard to verify when they say you're using more resources, your costs go up. How do we prove that we're using more resources? So, a lot of us have backed away from going on the cloud. We stick with a hybrid and try to keep all, much of our stuff local. And I was just concerned if we go 100% to the cloud, then we lose a lot of control over our data and our security and stuff, so.
Correct, correct. Yeah, like I said, if we do go to the cloud, that's one of my first questions. Most of the cloud vendors are hosted by Amazon and Amazon does have two different clouds. They have a private cloud for private businesses and they have a gov cloud, which is CEGIS compliant and for law enforcement. So I, usually, one of my first questions I ask them is, you know, which cloud are you running in? They have a private cloud for private businesses, and they have a gov cloud, which is CEGIS compliant and for law enforcement. So, usually, one of my first questions I ask them is, you know, "Which cloud are you running in?"
I had to follow up on a question that Counselor Paul asked the Fire Department, which is, has to do with priorities. And so, we're suggesting a $100,000 warrant article for IT. I believe it will be important for the voters to understand why this is a need-to-have and not a nice-to-have. I'd love to have fiber at my house. I don't. Why is this going to, how is this going to help to improve our services to our community, increase security? It's, I just recommend we make a strong sell to the voters, because otherwise, we may not have success with the warrant article.
Understood, got it. Yes?
I have a question. So, you're looking for X amount of dollars. Could you please break down what that money is going to be used for exactly and how that benefits us? So, you know, out of this dollar amount, which, you know, 10,000's going to this, 5,000's going to this, and without these two, we can't get Y. Do you know what I'm saying? So, that it's rather than just, "Oh, we want this money to do IT," that's great, but specifically, is it hardware, is it software, you know, services, things like that? It would be nice to see the breakdown of how that money is going to be spent exactly. I'd appreciate it, thank you.
No problem. Yes?
And so, just to remind the committee as well and the council, so I've allocated $55,000 for additional IT needs that can all be used at the police department under the default budget. You know, it's 50% short of what they're asking for. We have gone over in the IT budgets in previous years, you know, in that those lines have been overspent, but it's been made up in the monies that weren't spent on personnel because of the hiring process. So, it's more of a budgeting thing than anything else, but at the end of the day, with cybersecurity being our number-one priority, it's a priority here at Town Hall as much as it is at the police station, though the police station is, I think everyone would agree, housing even more sensitive information than what we're housing here at Town Hall, though the information we have here as well, we wouldn't want getting out either, you know, with people's personal information. So, there is money in the budget, under the default budget, that is allocated for this, and maybe it's something that we just try to budget for with, under that default budget over the coming years, if you didn't want to put a separate warrant article on the budget.
So, yeah, just changing gears a little bit. Deputy Chief, what do you attribute the, and by the way, congratulations on the Kalia certification, but what do you attribute the overdose, and thank God, it's much, much lower than it had been, but on one of your slides, it was really nice to see that we're in the 40 average over the past four years, and now we're in the, you know, more teens. So, what do you attribute that to?
I have no clue. All I know is that's a good number.
Yeah, it's a great number, yeah.
You know, I, we don't want to see an increase there, so a decrease is where we want to see.
Just, it's something happened that was a marked difference, so I don't know if it was because of all the training we have with, you know, when we arrive at houses, being able to give the shot right away, I just didn't know what affected it. And it was, it's really nice to see, and wanted to make sure everybody saw that on that. The other question I had was on the budget, similar question I had with the Fire Department, although on the uniform officers, it doesn't negate from salary to overtime. So, just a big number to look at. Looks like we have more officers coming on, which is great. So, whereas in the Fire Department, they had the negative there, this is a uniform officers division, we have an increased uptick of overtime salary budgeted, just didn't know if there was anything out of the ordinary that we're looking at. Although, again, same situation here, it looked like it's lower than 2021, but certainly more than 2022, so.
I don't have that in front of me, but my thought would be that it's due to the vacancies, filling open shifts and things of that nature.
Yeah, and that's why usually you see the inverse with the Fire Department, we had the negatives on the regular salaries. Just something to think about, I know we have many, many more budget sessions to go through, so just something to take a peek at as well, just as a question. Thank you.
So, can I chime in on that?
Of course.
With the overtime rates, where the salaries are part of a union contract, it's contractual. What I did is I took what the typical increase was for both of those departments, which is a 2% quota. I took their average current rate of all the employees that we had budgeted for. I looked at what was spent in the last five years, how many hours were spent. At that point, I then took the hours, multiplied it by the current average overtime rate, took the average over the past five years, as well as what was spent last year, and took the average of those three numbers to come up with the current overtimes you'll see in there. So, if you look at some of the other departments there, you'll see a decrease or an increase.
All right, so you really just, it's an average, not really looking at a trend?
It's, I would say it's a trend based on the average of the last several years, as well as what the current salary or hourly rate is.
And it has no tie into personnel at all, as far as the numbers go?
So, it does, where I took the current hours, so we have 67 officers. I took their hourly rate, found out their overtime rate, which is one and a half. And then I multiplied that number by the average number of hours we've spent over the last five years to come up with one of the three numbers.
It's like more of a projection, okay, good.
May I jump onto that? So, one of the reasons we did that, starting some years ago, was to flatten that overtime number over time. So, instead of having, as perhaps it might have been last year, when we might have had to spend significant dollars because we had low numbers of people, we tried to flatten that number and use the ability to manage within the bottom-line budget to address the overtime. And this is something we started with the idea of cost per hour and what is the average number of hours over years, so that we wouldn't have those budget spikes. So, that's the reason, it's kind of a philosophy, so we can tamp down the spiking and kind of keep a more flat overtime budget over time.
Now, is that something, Justin, that is just done in the Fire, Police Department, or is that in the Fire Department as well?
The Fire Department as well.
Okay, good, so that helps me a little bit on the last question I had. All right, thank you.
Yes, Jim?
Kim, is there any grants that can assist us with the IT issue?
I am not aware of any grants, unless you may be.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so.
John?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I was curious why animal control went down so much? Because I'm just looking over here, it says default budget, change in budget 2322, it's got like a negative, is that negative 9,693?
Yes, so the number of hours in their union contract was adjusted through a sidebar, so because it's a union contract, that reflects throughout the budget.
Just a, don't.
Yes.
We keep talking about cybersecurity, are we also looking at cyber insurance? Maybe it changes there also?
We've actually been in contact with PrimeX, our insurance company, and they are changing their current statuses, and we're working with them to address that.
Probably seen a spike there, an increase?
Price?
Yeah.
Not significantly at this point. Some of their conditions have changed, which have caused concern, which has made us reach out to them, but that's a separate story than the price.
Okay. All right, so, let's talk a little bit about the other community that we serve. So, we serve the, we serve the school department, and that's a community of 4,000 students and about 1,000 employees. And we serve that with four officers, as I recall, is that correct?
Yes.
So, an officer is about $125,000 a year, and it's probably, I'm guessing, anywhere between $50,000 and $80,000 a year to support those officers, whether it be with training, vehicles, and other types of things. Ballpark?
Sounds about right.
All right, so let's talk about, so your overall budget is $9,293,000. So, we did a quick calculation up here that about 6.2% of our total budget is to support that community. Are we seeing anything new or different out of that community? I mean, that's not paid for by the school department. You know, 23% of property revenues go to town services, so it's paid out of that 23%. Are we seeing anything new or different over there? Are we seeing more calls for service? Have things changed? Do we need more officers? You know, it's, it is 5,000 of the people that we service, so let's talk a little bit about that.
Sure, so, it's a good question, sir. The briefs that I get on a weekly or bi-weekly basis from Lieutenant Carney from the SROs is they are busy. There has been an uptick with student incidences over there, and they're spending a lot of time dealing with, you know, kid classroom stuff, bullying, texting, harassments, things of that nature. That's very time-consuming for them, but they're in the school.
How much training do we do with their staff? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. How much training do we do with their staff?
Yeah.
So, over the, well, let me back up a minute.
Well, we talk a lot about training, you know, so that's why I brought it up.
Sure, so prior to the SROs taking over, we sent them over there to shadow last year's SROs. For those who don't know, we revamped the SROs that were over there, they had been in there three, four, five years or more, so we wanted to bring in some new officers and let them experience a different part of policing, as you described, with a different type of community. So, with that, they've done some training with the prior SROs and some in-house classroom stuff with teachers. Given what we've discussed before about calls for service, there's definitely going to be a need here, sooner than later, for our agency to work closely with the schools, to deal with some of this harassment and, you know, bullying, things of that nature. Those are in the works. It's nothing that's set in stone yet, but we are going to be willing to work with our school partners to bring some more programs to the students.
So, traditionally, I mean, when I joined the council, we had one SRO.
Correct.
Through the ballot, we've added three SROs. We have, how many buildings do we have? We have six buildings, is that right? Three elementary and kindergarten, and so do, so in our next session, I would, you know, I would appreciate, and I'm sure the rest of here would appreciate, hearing whether or not the community is, needs more service. And understanding, you know, what that would be, because when we've hired more people, we've gone to the ballot and let the voters decide. But at least, even if we don't go to the ballot to do something like that, let's at least talk about it, so that we understand what those needs are going to be going forward. I guess the best way to describe it is as the anxiety of the, that community grows. Yes?
Yep. And Mr. Chairman, I would just add anecdotally, so when Captain Deputy Chief Bernard talks about the trainings going on at the schools, for those of you who aren't aware, my wife's a schoolteacher at South School, and Sergeant Bellino has done active shooter training at the various schools, and the feedback that I've heard is that it's one of the most impactful and beneficial trainings that have been done. And he's done that for all of the teachers, so it may be worth Sergeant Bellino, at some point during the process, coming in and just talking about what that, that kind of training entails.
Yes?
Yeah, Kim, do we have any reporting system on the type of incidents that happen in the school systems? For instance, assault on students, assault on teachers, and so on and so forth?
Yeah, we have all that in our daily logs.
So, while we may talk about, a lot about tax rate here, let's not be delusional about tax rate from the standpoint of what it actually costs to run this community. Running this community is over $120 million a year. 85 million of that is by our customer across the street, which is about 73% to 74% of the total property tax. So, we need to make sure that that valuable asset of those children are kept in our priority. While it may only be 6.5% of our budget in the police department, you know, what I want to hear is, is what are we doing next? As, you know, and I know, I know our plate is full, I get it. But, you know, when we're, you know, when it costs over $120 million to run this community, we need to start asking those questions. And if the question's also concerned bringing the Fire Department into it, and what they're going to do, and what training they need to be able to respond, then let's talk about that. Because, you know, times are calling us to be, you know, ready, I guess is the best way to put it. Anything else? Thank you. All right, we'll take another five minutes while the public works get set up. Um, all right, we'll take another five minutes while the public works get set up.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So we'll just go through the quick review of the organizational chart. Again, I am the Director of Engineering and Environmental Services. Beneath me is the Assistant Director. Also beneath me is the Environmental Engineer. We have two part-time attendants that work at the drop-off center. That's a seasonal operation of the drop-off center. We also have a Department Assistant and Donna, again Donna Lamoli is our Administrative Assistant. Beneath Dave at the Public Works Department, he has a foreman, two assistant foremans, two mechanic slash equipment operators. We have three equipment operators and five truck driver laborers. Slide number three. We're going to go through the solid waste portion of the budget. The Environmental Division is responsible for the collection, transportation, and disposal of municipal solid waste and sanitary sewer within the town of Londonderry. So as part of the solid waste portion of the budget, the Solid Waste Division is responsible to oversee and manage the curbside collection of household trash and recycling, the operation of the seasonal drop-off center. We coordinate the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, the waste oil collection, and lastly, the school recycling programs. The solid waste portion of the solid waste and recycling portion of our budget we're presenting this morning is for fiscal year 2023 is $2.3 million. The line items associated with that, again, this slide illustrates 16 line items of the solid waste budget. The majority of these items are associated with the solid waste operations, those being the salaries, the benefits, office supplies, certifications of the town employees. Those certifications are those individuals that work at the drop-off center. Two items, those being the waste collection services of $1.6 million and recycling services of $668,000. I'd like to call your attention to those. And the subsequent slides will elaborate on those two items. So under Waste Collection, for fiscal year 2023, we're budgeting $716,000 for, again, the curbside solid waste collection. That increase you'll see from 2022 to 2023, there's a 3% increase to the collection and transportation. That is per our contract with Waste Management. That also includes an addition of 120 new homes. So again, that's our best guess estimate of what the increased number of homes will occur in fiscal year 2023. Our solid waste tonnage, we're estimating at 8,960 tons. The unit rate of 8120, that is again, a 3% increase for the disposal. That is also again, per our contract. That quantity is variable and that's our best guess estimate of what the quantity will be. We have a fuel, an estimated fuel adjustment of $6,531. We are budgeting $20,000 for carts. Everybody calls them something different, your garbage can, your wherever you put your cart, your tote, you know, everybody calls it something different. So that $20,000, that's for new and replacement carts. Right now, we're, some of those carts are actually pushing 12 years old. Some of those carts were deployed back in 2009. So some of them are getting a little tender. We're at, we're budgeting $30,000 for our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. And lastly, $110,000 for our drop-off center. So we are, there's an increase by $29,000 for our Waste Collection Services from fiscal year '22 to '23. Regarding recycling, again, recycling curbside for fiscal year 2023, we're budgeting $515,000. This is, this reflects again, 3% increase to the collection and transportation per our contract in those additional 120 new homes. Our recycled tonnage is estimated at 2,700 tons at $55 a ton. The $5 increase, as you see from '22 to '23, that is per our contract and the quantity again, is variable. And lastly, we're budgeting a fuel adjustment increase of, or excuse me, a number of $3,620. So for our recycling curbside, there's an increase of approximately $46,000. Next, I'd like to go through is just our sanitary sewer portion of the budget. Just for, make everyone aware, again, our sewer budget is supported by the users and is an enterprise fund. So while taxpayers pay for it, because some of them are, they do pay taxes. But again, unless you're a user, you don't pay for the sewer, basically. So for fiscal year 2023, we're budgeting $2.8 million, an increase of $41,000. Next slide. Basically, this illustrates the personnel costs, the salaries, the benefits, et cetera. And again, any increase in that, again, would be due to, for those items, salaries. Those are basically items that are inputs from the Finance Department. Justin gives us those numbers. Next slide, there's 10 line items on this regarding, and they're all associated with sewer services, the usage, the phone, the electrical and the heat. And if I could just bring your attention to the first line item, that being the sewer usage services. For fiscal year 2023, we're budgeting $1.3 million. So that's our forecast for the upcoming fiscal year for our discharges to the wastewater treatment facilities in Manchester and Derry. So in essence, what that is, is those are costs for for the city of Manchester and the town of Derry for accepting and entreating the town of Londonderry's wastewater. So, and again, those, those fees, those, those numbers are generated or dictated by our intermunicipal agreement between the two communities. The second item, a big ticketed item I'd like to bring your attention to was, would be our Sewer Management Services. We're proposing $437,000. Those are costs that are associated for retaining our consultants to perform general engineering services. So right now, we're in the process of updating our facility, facilities plan, which will result in a sewer rate analysis that we need to look at, making sure our rates are, cover what we anticipate expanding our sewer collection system. It also covers the oversight and inspection of our cleaning and the repairs of our sewer and any pipeline analysis that we may end up having to do. Last item I'd like to bring your attention to would be the last line item, that being the sewer repairs and maintenance. We are budgeting $246,000. So that is to the, for the day-to-day operations of the six pump stations that the town has and the 42 miles of sanitary sewer. So like I say, that's a weekly preventive maintenance that our vendor does at the, at each of the stations. That includes meter calibrations, operations of our SCADA system, the communication systems, the alarms, any emergencies that might occur at night. And of course, they always occur at one o'clock in the morning on a holiday weekend. And again, cleaning of the wet wells, that's what that, that $246,000 covers. The next slide, there's 10 line items there. Again, you'll see the, for the most part, all those line, all those costs, all those budgeted costs are the same except for the sanitary sewer, or excuse me, the second to the last line item, sewer machinery and equipment, $476,000. And as you see, that indicated the per the IMA. So those are upgrades to the city of Manchester's wastewater treatment facility. We're in partnership with them and they're, they're able to give us a list of all the improvements that they anticipate to have. So we know that that cost will be, that's a given cost that we know. And they're, they're a pleasure to be, to be a customer of theirs personally. So finally, I'll go through the Highway Division fiscal year '23 budget. For fiscal year 2023, we're budgeting $4.3 million. The Highway Division is responsible for the maintenance of 186 miles of road, seven bridges, approximately 4,700 drainage structures, whether it's a catch basin, an outlet structure, drain manhole, head wall, drainage manholes, and 56 miles of drainage pipe. The next slide, again, these are, illustrates again, the personnel costs, those being salaries, benefits, et cetera. Again, those are input by the Finance Department and reflects people's salaries and those particular items. And as I see it, is an increase of $129,000. Dave's expensive. The next slide, 15 are, again, those 12 line items. Again, we, there is no change to any of those line items from between 2022 and 2023. The next slide shows again, 12 line items. The increase on that line item would be for the, or one increase in the line item would be the third one down, that being the capital lease, going from $148,000 to $183,000. The other one I would like to bring your attention to would be the highway maintenance, highway road maintenance of $864,000. So of that 864, we get a state block grant of $609,000. That is, so that number is included in that 864. Another item, and I'll elaborate a little further on that in the conclusion. One other one I would like to take it, make your, make your note of is the second to the last would be the highway salt. Again, the $220,000. So that $220,000, that's been a default since fiscal year 2012. What we have seen is again, the 10-year average is about $72 per ton for the cost of salt. This year, we're, we're seeing an increase of 30% of that number. So we are very welcome to Kevin's proposal to add additional monies to our road salt program. Thank you, Kevin.
I have a question about hydrant service. We just went through a lawsuit with them and we're told we're taking an increase, yet we're carrying the same number going forward.
Yeah, so I've made, I've made Justin aware of this. That number is probably going to be adjusted. We're just waiting for the settlement to be completed to finalize that number. But there's a good chance that number will be going down.
We also have increases in Manchester Waterworks and Derry.
Right, so in case you didn't hear, Donna, there are increases with Manchester Waterworks in Derry's hydrants, not anywhere near as much as what Penachuk was proposing. But there is an offsetting increase there.
But you're saying hydrant service is going to go up, not down?
I don't know what the net number will be when it's all said and done, but that number that's currently there is most likely to change.
It's hard to put a true number to it, pinpoint a true number. It's so convoluted the way that they.
And you identified the highway capital lease, I'm sorry, highway capital lease program to be up, but what was the reason why it went up to 40,000?
The prior year warrant article.
With what?
Last year, there was a warrant article that was approved by the voters.
And if I can just continue, so next slide, Donna, thank you. The roadway maintenance services, again, for fiscal year 2023, we are estimating, again, receiving $609,000 from the state block grant monies. Again, that's for shim and overlays of roads, guardrail repair, crack sealing, striping, ditch cleaning, and tree trimming. Just to recap, some of the roads, projects that we had done this past spring into the fall. We did a number of shim and overlays, those being on Alexander Road, Buckthorne, Coin Street, Gilcrest Road, a portion of Gilcrest south of the Hanaford driveway down to South Road. We did a portion of shim and overlay on Kimball Road. Lone Street, we did a shim and overlay and some shim and overlay on Old Dairy Road. We also did some drainage improvements at Capitol Hill Drive, Chase Road, Columbia Drive, Sparhawk, and we also did some drainage improvements on Old Dairy Road this past construction season, if you will. So what, the roads that we're, they've been on the list, they're going to stay on the list till we hopefully conquer them. Our Bancroft, Barkis, Shawmarin Row. We still have the Harvey Road culvert replacement on the books. And lastly, Parment the Road. So one thing I'd like to kind of elaborate a little further on what Kevin was saying again, about the $650,000 Maintenance Trust Fund. Again, the, the purpose of that article is, the money's associated with that is, will be to repair and maintain the town of Londonderry roads and its, its infrastructure. Again, we received that $609,000 in state grant, state block grant for, again, those are for roadway maintenance. Those funds, as I indicated, for shimming and overlaying, tree trimming and whatnot. Those funds are sufficient for, to overlay approximately two to three miles of road on a yearly basis. However, a road should be overlaid on a, every 12 years. Therefore, with the state block grant money on us, we're on a 69-year maintenance cycle way beyond the lifespan of the roadway. As Chairman Farrell indicated, again, the Town Council had selected to support establishing the Roadway Maintenance Trust Fund back in fiscal year 13. It was something that Tom Frieda had proposed. So if the approved, if it's, if it is approved by the voters, the Public Works Department will have that additional $650,000 for roadway maintenance. We feel, again, the town has a major investment in its roadway system with a replacement value estimated to be in excess of $200 million. So since the, the since we've been working under a default budget and again, working with Yanos, again, our goal was always to keep the good roads in good shape and rebuild the roads which are in bad shape when the funds for reconstruction were allocated on a year-to-year basis. So it costs about $180,000 a year to shim and overlay a road at today's current prices. It costs $1.8 million for full-depth reconstruction. So there's two, two forms, there's actually more than just two forms of maintaining a road. You can do a, you can crack seal it, you can just repair potholes, you can grind it, you can do a full-depth reconstruction till you redo everything. Those are, those are means of pavement restoration, if you will. But one thing that all, people always forget is, you know, what's under the roadway. So, and drainage is one of the main, important, main items that will deteriorate a road. If you don't have underdrain on the road or the road is flooded, it's, it just raises heck with the road. As Kevin indicated though, too, you know, you're, there's more than the road maintenance. There's the guardrail, there's the traffic lights. Since I've been here, we've got four traffic lights, signalized intersections that the town is responsible for now. Each of those, each of those lights, at least $100,000 worth of lights. So God forbid we get a lightning strike or something like that. Our oldest system is up at Grunier Field and Webster Lane. That was an old system that the airport had given to us as part of some off-site improvements that they were responsible for. So just this past fall, we spent $50,000 just to re-stripe the entire town. Yellow lines, white lines, it was about 100, approximately $50,000. The, the cost for guardrail repair is about $90 a linear foot. And we have probably 10,000, my guess is about 10,000 linear feet, about two miles of guardrail went down. So all those things add up to the, that's all coming out of that. As Kevin says, if we don't get the, the article doesn't pass by the voters, we're trying to maintain all that within, with $650,000, the money that we get from the, or the 609 that we would get from state block grant. So I would highly encourage people to, we do need to think about how we're going to proceed with our road maintenance. And again, Dave has experience with it, I have experience with it. And today, what ends up happening is, and what's been happening for a number of years now is the Highway Foreman, Paul Schatt, will go out and drive the roads and he'll come up with a list. So this past spring, Paul came up with a list of, it was the cost, the estimated cost was $2.2 million for the number of roads that he had done, that he had looked at that need shimming and overlaying. I independently go out and I look at the roads that he had, again, we're very familiar with the roads, obviously, and say, okay, well, you know, and I know what's coming down the pike as far as development, working in the office. So I can say, well, that one can, because I know there's something coming down the road. So we'll leave that for somebody else to assist us with. We go through the list, I go, I drive them, then we'll drive them together and come up with, we'll, we end up shortlisting, you know, and set a list. So this past year, again, we had come up with a list of, which, some of the roads that I previously mentioned of $800,000 worth of shimming and overlaying. So that's, that's how we've been, that's been our roadway management program for a number of years. One other thing, another big ticketed item that is still coming down the pike and I'm sure Yanos mentioned it last year and I've been mentioning it, is a Harvey Road culvert replacement. There's a 90, 98-inch culvert corrugated metal pipe that passes through beneath Harvey Road. We had put it out to bid and the, the estimate was $1.2 million. The engineer's estimate was $1.2 million. We had two bidders on it. We got 1.4 was a low bidder and then the next bidder was $1.6 million. We just barely had enough money to, to do that. But one thing that did not sit well with myself or our consultant was the contractor just kept saying, and he was, in my opinion, he was unresponsive because he should have given us his, who his subcontractors were, where his materials were going to be coming from. And he kept saying, when we asked the question, he says, "Don't worry about it. Just give me the contract and I'll tell you who it's going to be." Harvey Road, if you ever drive Harvey Road, I don't need that aggravation. So I didn't want to pass that on to Dave. So long story short, we, in speaking with some of the local contractors, how could we, how can we redesign this or repackage it up? And what it was, it was just, they were taking on too much liability that they had no control over. So we re-looked at it, we'll be refiling for an amended dredge and fill permit and hopefully we can get that done, you know, 2022, that's the goal. So that's all I have this, this morning. Unless you have something to add.
Dave, could I, just, just to add to that Harvey Road culvert replacement? So keep in mind that, I mean, it's still probably going to be around $1.4 million to replace that. That is the entire roadway maintenance budget for one year. So what Yanos had been doing is putting money aside for a number of years so that there is now enough money to do that culvert replacement. But those monies that have been getting, basically, you're taking a year's worth of roadway maintenance and putting it towards one culvert, which has to be done, but that's, you know, there's, there's, the stuff is expensive and there's limited amount of money to do stuff like this as well as the general maintenance and repairs of the roadways.
Thank you, Chairman Farrell. Thank you for your presentation. Just a question regarding Petten Gale and the widening. I heard on a council meeting that they were discussing about the requirement to widen. And I was wondering if you can kind of give an update on, on that? We're out timeframe and stuff.
Well, again, yeah, the desire was to widen Petten Gale Road to its full. Originally, Petten Gale Road, the base is there. Chad for the, ultimately, it was to be a two-lane road both ways. So the sub-base is there. And again, what we were trying to do is, again, just looking at the future widening or what the future brings for that area. And that would have, and that's why the utility, excuse me, the drainage and everything is so far set off the, the existing edge of pavement. You'll see that even the traffic lights, the mast arms and everything is set for full, full with development, basically.
Thank you.
Joe, I'm sorry.
So on, Chairman Farrell indicated things like fuel are going to be things we want to look at really closely. Are you comfortable with the budget? Pretty much, I mean, exactly the same dollar amount as it was, as it was last year, knowing that, you know, fuel's definitely going up, probably five, six bucks per gallon at some point.
Right now, Joe, again, we're, it's a default budget, so we didn't really put, you know, we were holding the line, but again, we will.
Well, I mean, you could put some lines up and some lines. I, I just wanted to make sure we, everybody as a group, we talk, anywhere this, as Chairman Farrell indicated earlier, anytime we're talking about a department that's using fuel, you know, and that's fire and that's police. But specifically on this one, I, I saw that it was the same. So I just wanted to make sure that we were accounting for that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's the same right now, but again, under what I'm proposing, would, would add another $20,000 for utility increases.
And those are the three ones you indicated earlier, right? It's just not reflecting here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jonathan.
Excuse me, this goes to the roadway maintenance. And my question is based on what standards contractors are required to use when they build new roads in town and how do we ensure they do that? And it comes from very anecdotal evidence in my COVID-walking-the-neighborhoods practices. There's a road I walked that was, the original part was built many years ago and then it has since been extended. And the extended part is just crumbling, which leads me to believe it wasn't built as well as the original. So to prevent future road maintenance, how are we ensuring that new roads going in are built to the specs that we need?
So nowadays, our, the newer roads are built to a standard of 12 inches of bankrun gravel, six inches of crushed gravel, four inches of pavement. So again, and then we also have underdrain and then enclosed drainage systems, depending on, you know, and that's what our standard is now, John.
And we're able to keep an eye on, making sure the contractors are actually doing that?
Correct. So again, if in some of our, if it's a new development that's being developed, that's being constructed by a developer, we have a third-party consultant that oversees that. Make sure they have the, you know, the sieves, the materials that they're placing in the roadway are good, you know, they meet spec and whatnot. So I wonder though, John, where do you live?
I'll talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, please, no. Because again, what, what may happen is, again, if it's, if it's the, the older part of the road, yeah, it depends what, what had occurred on the roadway itself. So I'd like to talk to you.
Yeah.
So the regulation at the planning board level changed about 20 years ago. I learned more about culverts and ripraps 20 years ago on the planning board and about depth of roads and everything. So the roads that were built in the last probably 22 or 23 years are under the new regulation. And those roads have held up pretty well. It's the ones that were built prior to that. And an easy way to tell is, is that they don't have the drainage and they don't have any type of curving at all. And those are usually the roads that were built prior to that, before that regulation was put in place. The new regulation seems to have helped with the maintenance of the roads. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
So, Tim.
This goes back to solid waste collection. Two questions on it. I noticed that we went from 9,300 tons to 8960 tons.
Yeah.
With all the expansion in town, we're going to see less, less waste collection?
Again, those are, we're, we're, we have more data to fall back on, Tim. So we're able to bring that number down.
I mean, it's nice to see, it's just kind of surprising with all the growth in the town to see that it's actually going to go down.
Totally understand.
Maybe recycling will go up, but.
Yeah, and, and that's one thing that we had seen at the drop-off center during COVID. Everybody within their brother was, you know, cleaning out the basement and the attic. And so we saw a lot of activity at the drop-off center.
I noticed it was busy there, too. Longer line. The other question I had was on the estimated fuel adjustment.
Yeah.
We're talking about the same amount of gallons, but we went from like a dollar to 35 cents?
Yeah.
Did our contract change to where we got like that good of a deal on fuel?
No, it, it hasn't. And again, just so that everybody can understand, just for the fuel adjustment, what that entails. So our vendor, Waste Management, had driven around the, or had take, done an analysis of the, of the, how much it would cost them in gallons of diesel to perform their, their collection per month. So they came up with a, it would, it would cost, it would, they would need 1,555 gallons per month. So, and when we signed the contract, it was at a rate of $2.79.
Right.
So again, that fluctuation, if it goes up, again, per the contract, and to be fair with them, if it goes up, we give them that additional monies. Or if it goes down, they, they rebate us, if you will.
Okay.
So again, that 35 cents, Tim, right, it brings the cost of the fuel up to $3.14.
Okay, so that's an additional 6,000 this year coming up compared to the additional 18,000 last year.
Correct, that we had, that we had guesstimated.
Thanks, that makes more sense. Thanks, that makes more sense.
It make, yeah.
First, I, I need to confess that my, uh, my daughter's responsible for driving over some of the wet paint and striping in the roads.
Sign as affidavit. Oh, I know where he lives.
Get it afterwards.
He lives on the state road.
And, uh...
Oh, state road's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regarding pretreatment, is that something, is that an approach that we use for the, during the snow, instead of using salt? What's, what's our approach with pretreatment of the roads?
So, so there's different, different, uh, definitions of pre-treating. When you're going down ninety-three, and I'm sure you see it, when you go to, on ninety-three, you see the, the zebra stripes, so they're pre-treating the, the pavement. That's a form of pre-treatment. We pre-treat our salt by blasting brine, so when the, the salt falls out of the truck, we have, we, we squirt that, uh, that salt with brine, which is basically a, a salt solution, and that's what starts activating the salt.
Oh, okay.
To, to activate. So sometimes, again, when you see, you know, it's, it's starting to snow, you say, well, where are the trucks? Where are the trucks? Well, we wait till there's at least a couple of inches of snow on the ground, that way, when we go out and the trucks are, are deployed, it hits the snow, and it, it stays down, otherwise it bounces around like popcorn. So, that, so we do pre-treat the salt as it's coming out of the, the truck. That makes sense.
Just put a plug in there for the drop-off center, the guys there are great to deal with. Great, so, you know, they're funny, and I think they're great. I still don't understand, sometimes they get charged twenty-eight dollars, sometimes they get charged fourteen dollars for the same load, but, but it's, but, but I'm good with it.
So...
Depends on how much you laugh at the joke. That's right.
That's fine, that's fine.
Three guys to the drop-off center, I did go down, I don't know, a couple of weekends ago. I do have people ask me, are we gonna expand our hours? And going down there and taking a look at it, uh, do we have enough room for expansion in the future?
So, we, we're probably tight in, in the, uh, real estate end of things, Jim, and as Kevin had indicated, we've looked at it, and probably what will end up happening is expanding our hours. So again, maybe, maybe we'll be, and again, this isn't cast in stone.
Yeah.
Because again, right now, we're open on Saturdays, in a way that our contract is written, so, uh, we're open Saturdays, and then during the summertime, right, we're open Wednesdays. So that would give our vendor, Waste Management, at least two days to go out there and pick up the, the dumpsters. So if we, or if all of a sudden, we're gonna start opening, so, so it kind of worked, okay? So they could go out there, kind of, kind of at their leisure. So if we end up opening now three days a week, it's gonna change the dynamics completely with our vendor. So he's gonna be, he's gonna need to get out there the following day, or, or however we figure it out.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, I know several years ago, we talked about, uh, putting some type of, uh, I don't know, shed or something for the gentlemen that work there, and it, it just, I just laugh, I mean, they do a great job. But the, uh, the, uh, the wood stove's outside, and it's like, are they gonna move it into one of the contacts boxes or what? But have we even thought about making better accommodations for those guys?
We have, and it's, it's still in the works.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we haven't forgotten them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have two things. One of them is on the same vein as, uh, Councilor Butler. Instead of adding a day, what if we extended it, um, instead of ending in, in November, or, or starting later, um, extending it, say, from, you know, when it snows, to only having snow days there off? Do you know what I mean?
No, I don't.
Like, so adding more days of the year, more months to it, as opposed to an extra day, so a longer season, um, then you wouldn't have to worry about the amount of days, you know, they come at their leisure, it would still be the same.
Yeah.
It's just that it would extend out longer, and I know snow comes into it because of that road, but I mean, it can be announced that, you know, when there's, you know, more than an inch of snow, or two inches of snow, there's not gonna be any, you know, the dump won't be open, but after any other time, because it can be dead of winter, and it can still be no snow, just cold, and, um, it might be a, a way to extend that, which I think would be good.
Yeah.
And maybe you just take out two or three months just for winter, and you just extend it a little longer.
Yeah, well, it, that's, that's an idea, Deb, and we'll have to look at it, because again, one thing that we would end up having to do is to, to cover those, those, uh, those dumpsters, those open-top dumpsters, because again, then we're gonna end up paying for disposal of ice.
I get it, I get it. I was just thinking, instead of a day, causing all of that confusion with them is extending time, and how that would, it might be something to, to look at. The other thing is, is I hope that you do take into consideration, and you and I've had this conversation with Kevin, and when we're looking at redoing the roads, um, adding it a little wider, and having some foresight of putting in walking slash biking paths on all the roads, that eventually, they would all ca- connect, and so this way, it's just a little bit at a time, and it doesn't hurt the taxpayer, but I think every taxpayer, not everyone, but a lot of the taxpayers out there, would like to have that, um, ability to get out and feel safe when they're on the roads, or, you know, so it's something that I think, when we're doing the roads, maybe two, two lines, like, this is with it, and this is without it. And, and, and I think that would be a, a good thing for people to see, when they're talking about giving you extra money and stuff like that, that projection is saying, you know what, it would cost us this if we were to do it, or if we do it along with our roads, it's gonna cost us this and save us exponentially. Take a little longer, absolutely, but it will get done.
Yeah.
Which I think is something that, as we saw during COVID, um, people like to get out and walk around, and for me, it's also a safety issue, watching the high school kids run on, um, Hardy Road and Mammoth Road without having a, a little area, and there's no even shoulders on those roads, it's just ravines and poison ivy. It's very scary, and, and I, I just would hate to see a terrible accident happen. So if we can think about those sort of things in the future, I think you guys do a decent job on the roads, I can't, you know, say that they're horrible, because they're not. Drive to, drive through New York, or Connecticut, or Rhode Island, and see how horrible those roads are, even Massachusetts. I think you guys do a great job on the roads, considering your budget, and, um, I just think that we need to think in the future and have a plan, so that it is in stages, as opposed to chunks. And that was all I had to say, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? When are we putting the credit card debit machine in place for the, uh, recycling center?
It's been, it's on, uh, it's in trial, last week.
Currently, last week it was in a trial phase, or not trial phase, right now, we're accepting them, and we're testing them out.
April will roll out full.
That's the plan.
It, it's actually under, Bob's out there this morning as well, Justin.
Correct. It's, the plan was last week, this week, next week, and one more, right?
Yes.
So people will have, don't have to go to the Irving and get money orders anymore, they don't have to bring a checkbook starting April?
Correct, there will be a convenience fee in April.
Or they have a debit card.
Correct, there will be a convenience fee for that, and if they want to avoid that, they're able to bring the money order or check.
Let's have a further discussion about the convenience fee on seven dollars. Let's go a little bit deeper into that as we go through the budget process, and let's all talk about that.
I would love to.
Fantastic. I like that. Really? We'll have a discussion, and let's have a discussion about that.
Absolutely.
So, gentlemen, with that, I mean, do we think...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had one question, because you brought that up about credit cards. You're telling me that it's not already active? And that the fees in here, like the nine hundred and thirty dollars is for the simple swipe fee, drop-off center credit card, and the other three hundred for the device for drop-off center credit card? That's planning for next year that we don't?
So, the plan was to have this activated in, we started this in February of twenty twenty.
Right.
The next month, COVID. Everything came to a halt, and we put it on stop because transmission of germs with signing and passing the iPad back and forth, the transfer station essentially went to a, you step out, put your check in the box, so there's limited, uh, interaction between people to separate it. We had already purchased everything in February to get it out and rolling in April of twenty twenty. I didn't predict a worldwide pandemic.
Right, but, so that, we still keeping it in the budget because of the plan?
It's in there right now because of that, yes.
Okay, that's...
It's, like I said, we, we were ready to go, April twenty twenty, but things started hitting, and we put it off for safety reasons, and now that we're back up and running, we're doing the retraining, and last week, this week, it's out there now, and next week, it'll be out there again. And then, uh, in April, we'll be full force with it and functioning a hundred percent with it.
Okay, and we're still opening during the holidays, so people can get rid of their cardboard, right?
That's the plan.
Okay, well, anything else? John, congratulations on twenty years.
Thank you very much.
Not sure how you survived it.
Remember, I was jet black.
And, uh, you know, we do have a, a, a recognition certificate for you and a, um...
John, we should go here.
Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so, um, we'll give it, uh, we'll give it three minutes for the library to set up, and then we'll, uh, we'll come back.
All right, so we'll give it, we'll give it three minutes for the library to set up, and then we'll, we'll come back. So Mr. Chair, before the library goes, I just want to do a brief introduction. You'll notice there's a new face sitting up here with us. The library trustees recently hired Aaron Matlin as the new library director. Aaron comes to us by way of the town of Amesbury, Mass, where she was the previous library director there. Although Aaron lives in the neighboring town of Derry, which we won't hold against her, except for today, where we're expecting another Lancers victory over the Astros. But I think you'll find Aaron very delightful, she's been great to have on staff since she started in, in working with the town employees. So, Aaron, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Very nice to meet you all. I'm sitting here with Donna Plant, who's the head of Technical Services and Reference. And so she's going to be controlling the computer end, and I'll do the chat.
You'll find we're really easy, we're real pussycats, as you probably could see out here.
Yeah. So going forward, I just want to mention our circulation. I was not here, obviously, for a majority of this time, but it looks like from fiscal '21, the library checked out over 200,000 items, which was up from the previous year. Obviously, I think that was related to COVID, people needing more materials at home, wanting to obviously do more at home, because they couldn't go anywhere, so that was great. We do feel that in FY, though that number is down from the past years, we do feel that that number will go up in FY '23, as we promote more of the collection, as we hopefully be able to expand our hours by filling a couple of positions. But do compare to last year, we are, it looks, so far we are coming back from that number. So we're excited to continue that push forward as we move on. The next few pictures, you'll see the first top slide there is the curbside service that was happening. The middle slides are the sorting that was taking place inside the library while we were closed. And then the bottom slides there are the retrieving of those materials for that curbside service. So while the library was closed, staff was not only just doing the curbside, but all of those other things as well, sorting, retrieving items, answering reference questions, and prepping and filming programming, which obviously takes up a lot of time, more time being closed, as, you know, we are doing reader's advisory and things of that nature. So it was a very busy time. Our reference transactions were over 32,000. That was up from the previous year. Obviously, with COVID, there wasn't as much reference transactions, but there was a lot of retrieving materials, like I said, and the reader's advisory, which does take a lot of time for staff, and obviously a very popular service during that time, because patrons could not come into the building. So it was really up to staff to get those materials, recommendations, and all of those other things for the patrons. Our program attendance, obviously, very different over the past five years. We are down quite a bit, but obviously, we switched over to the virtual programming. And we're hoping that in FY '23, we can start doing more in-person program, even if that's a minimal amount of patrons. Obviously, that's all related to making sure we're following those CDC guidelines and appropriate social distancing. So, but we look forward to increasing those numbers and bringing those participants back into the library for the programming piece. And you'll see, these next few slides are just talking about our participants for the young adult programs. We had 21, I'm sorry, 20 programs with over 1,100 participants. Obviously, down from the previous years, but excited that, that we did have people participate and be involved in those young adult programs. And then the same thing with the adult programs, we had over 300 participants. But it was nice, again, to continue that connection with those patrons, even if it was just virtual. And the children's programs, we had 56 of those and over 2,800 participants, which was really exciting. And the staff did a really great job on those programs, even though with limited, obviously, participation, it was nice to see people participating in the long run. Our summer reading program, we had 117 children participate with over 3,000 books read, which was really exciting. And then the same thing with adult, we had 43 people participate and over 300 books read. So it was nice that over the summer, we had over 3,000, almost close to 4,000 books read total for those age groups, and 160 people participate. And I just want to thank the staff. I think they did a really great job over the last year to continue to provide any type of service to our patrons. It was a tough time, still is, and people are still nervous about, obviously, using resources. But I think those resources just looked a little different. And so that was an adjustment for staff and for all libraries everywhere. But it was interesting to see how every library did it differently, and how libraries connected and be able to share those ideas with each other. And then for the budget piece, you'll see that five-year comparison over our, overall, from the budget from year to year. Obviously, our budget this year is down compared to five years ago. Obviously, that's COVID-related and, and financial issues there, but we're hoping to move forward with that. And then on this last side, you'll see we have some goals for FY '23. Obviously, we'd love to return to full staffing. This would allow us to open full hours, which would be really fantastic for our community. Again, start that in-person programming, and to be able to collaborate with surrounding libraries and other community organizations. We're already starting that piece in December. We're going to be doing a food for finds program, and actually competing with the Dairy Public Library on who can collect the most food to be able to donate to a local pantry in the New Hampshire Food Bake. So we're hoping to win that and brag about it continuously toward them. So we're excited to offer that opportunity, not only for our patrons, but also for the community, a win-win either way. So, and there'll be more of that to come as we move on throughout the year, and we are able to make those connections. Any questions?
Do you see yourself moving forward, like I know with COVID and everything, you guys have been doing mostly, I guess, let's say, like, Zoom meetings or whatever, whatever. Do you see yourself as more people coming in to keeping that up as like a hybrid option, where some could do it remote, some don't have to, and maybe combine them both together?
Are you talking about programming, or?
Like for your programs for adults, children's, and stuff like that?
We'll have to look into that option. It's going to depend on the community feedback. We are planning to do a survey, hopefully after the new year, reaching out to the community and what kind of needs they're interested in. What kind of program would they be interested in? Are they willing to come in person? And what that looks like, so we can adjust staffing if necessary, and what, and what we can do with that.
Yeah, so I guess, what's the timeframe that you're looking at for returning to full staffing and full hours for the library?
So we currently have three positions open right now. It's an assistant director position, and then two part-time positions. The goal, we've already talked, I've talked with my staff about filling those two part-time positions. If those can get filled, which they are in a current budget and are proposed in the next budget, we, once we fill those, we can look at opening full time, which we've already started that discussion, getting the material ready to start those processes of posting those positions. So as soon as that gets filled, and we feel like we'll furly staff, and the schedule is readjusted with those additional positions, we can look at opening full hours.
No one else? So, so Aaron, on quick calculation here, I think the library is 3.5% of the, of the total town budget that, you know, we fund as, you as a separate form of government. We have longtime trustees. I'm sure, I'm sure Betsy has had long discussions with you about, you know, past and, you know, and future directions. We, we think that, at least I think, that, you know, that the town is getting a bargain at 3.5% of our total budget, which is 23% of our, you know, property taxes. We look forward to your, your new ideas and enthusiasm, and, you know, and I hope you don't slight us any, you know, and really work to beat dairy in this whole food.
Oh, we will. Don't worry. I have a plan in place.
Thank you for, thank you for being here, thank you for accepting, and we look forward to a, to a fun future with you.
Yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm excited.
Fantastic. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was probably the easiest library presentation in the last 10 years.
I'd agree to that.
So can we have the lights, please? All right, so here we are at the, you know, ahead of schedule. I have some notes to review for the next meetings. Does anyone else, anything they would like to add? Or I'll just, I'll review these, and then we can add more to it. But here, here's what I got so far. Let's talk a little bit about this Warren article. Here's the things that I'm hearing that are outside of default that we need to dive deeper into. These striker beds. IT for the police department. Big question I have is, is if you look at where the IT department is here in Town Hall, it's on the first floor, and it's below two bathrooms above. I want to know who thought of that? You know, why would you have, why you have water above the server room? Now, I've never been able to quite figure that out, but, you know, let's, let's think about that a little bit, and whether that continues to be a good idea, or if we're taking things out to the cloud, it probably won't matter. And, you know, we have to use those, a Warren article is with the understanding that if we do make these increases, it will become part of default. And also talk a little bit more about the energy piece. I mean, from, you know, I, I noted in November of last year, regular gasoline was $1.89 a gallon, $1.89 a gallon on, on Election Day. I know the national average was 2.15, but it was $1.89 here. And now at most stations, it's $3.39 a gallon. If we don't think that energy costs are going to affect us, we're just kidding ourselves. So let's come up with, what is that delta? And what do we really think it is? I understand the town manager has some of it under default, but let's identify it, and let's, let's take this head on. The other thing that comes to mind, and which has been a conversation for almost two years now, is, and it's more for the town solicitor than anything else, I keep being told we have no standing around the whole water piece, and around whether we can be part of a class action or not part of a class action. Let's continue to talk about this during budgets to figure out whether this is something we need to go to the community with or not. This is our one time to go to the community a year and ask them what they want us to do. So let's, I, I know it's a difficult question, but we need to address it. Along with that, what is DES's timeline to wrap up this study, so we can find out what funding we may need to help support the consent decree area? While I don't think the taxpayers of London Dairy should pay for anything with regards to the consent decree area, we all know that that is only a legal line drawn in the middle of Hydrangeon Road, and that other parts of the town are being affected. We need to look at, what does this mean going forward, and, you know, and talk about this, and get it out front, and gauge the community of whether or not we need to address this now. There's a lot of talk throughout the state around all these 55 and older communities. And they were all designed to main, with private roads. And that community is a voting block. They're going to the state and campaigning or lobbying to the state for the towns to take over these roads, which were not built to town spec. What I'd like to see from the Public Works Department is, is how many miles of these roads are we vulnerable for in town? And what would be our cost of taking over these roads and having to maintain them? Let's, let's get the community to understand what they're really asking for. I understand their argument of that they're, they're paying to maintain roads, and they pay taxes in town. But what is the real cost of maintaining these roads? And there's more to maintaining these roads from the standpoint of understanding that we're sending emergency vehicles in there, and whether or not we have enough turning radius to actually turn around in some of these roads. There's some developments here in town, I know that would be a problem for us. Further understanding of like, understanding, it takes, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, it takes four hours to do a full loop to plow the town for the 186 miles of road that we're responsible for. What is the real cost of that? And, you know, because if we're looping the town two and three times, and we're now spending 60% more on, you know, on fuel, what is the real cost of that, so that we can support having an understanding of what the energy cost is? It seems we could figure that out for the, for the waste management piece. We should be able to figure that out for the plowing piece. While I understand it for emergency services and that they're normal patrol, I think this would help give us some sort of bar to work off of, understanding what that actual cost is. And the last one I captured from, from the seniors and from the senior center and from the 55 and older communities is around recreation. I, I don't completely understand this game of pickleball, but they're all looking for, how are we going to be able to have more pickleball in town? And can we please look at what recreational facilities we have now? And is there, is there an opportunity to be able to support this community and what they're asking for? Because there are 1,000 dwellings in town, and they're the people asking. I don't know whether we should or we shouldn't do anything, but at least let's start to understand it a little better, so we can answer the questions. That's all the notes I captured for today. Is there anything else anybody would like to add to look at for the next meeting?
I'm all checked off. You go.
All right, so no, all right, so that's it? Nothing else?
For the town, that's it.
For the town, for the 23%. Okay. If there's nothing else, we don't need a motion to adjourn or anything, we're, we're done for today then. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for participating.